The meeting is called to order, Southampton planning board Thursday, July 24th, 2025. The Secretary of State.
Chair LaFaro is absent, Vice Chair Fidety.
Present.
Secretary is here, Board Member Mu Too, I believe, is late. Board Member Neely.
Present.
Board Member Fulham.
Present.
And Board Member Glazer is absent. We do have a quorum.
Very good. Could we please rise?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in its whole liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any minutes to approve?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
Let me just get my notes opened. We have June 26th and July 10th.
Very good. Do we have a motion? Motion by Tom, second by Kate, all in favor. I oppose abstentions. We have four yes, three absent. We'll close the afternoon session, convene the afternoon work session. Oh, I don't know. Claire's ready for that. Is Claire, uh, Tom?
Here.
Okay. Tom, are you in on that?
I am.
Okay, come on up. Sure, yeah, this is the, uh...
Claire can introduce or...
Uh, sure, come on up. I'm sure Claire's locator. Hi, folks. Just give us your names to the audio record, please.
Keith Kito, Tiger Defco.
Okay.
Laurel Mooney.
Laurel.
Laurel Mooney.
Laurel Mooney. Great. And this is, um, this is the Shinnecock Town Fishing Dock.
Yeah, hi. Thomas Alton, Town Engineer, Shinnecock Commercial Dock.
Welcome always. Claire, we're on the work session and...
Yeah, I'm in work session.
All our parties assembled.
Great. And so what the board had asked last time because it was a lot of information, a lot of questions about how they got here, what the process was, the applicant prepared these memos and schematics about how they got here, a little memo. I actually have copies too. You have the memo itself. That's okay, I have that.
We can walk you through a bit of the backstory as to how we arrived here today. So proceeding this package, around about 2018, we're, the town's getting a ton of calls from cell tower developers looking to partner with us for projects. And then in 2018, we started to put together an internal group to review these, and that was headed by the Controller's Office at the time. So through that process, we identified a bunch of sites along with using the town's cellular master plan. And then in 2021, we started to develop an RFP for these cell tower sites. And then in 2023, the town decided to move forward with the RFP for two of those sites. And one was the North Sea Transportation, and then the other one was the Shinnecock Commercial Dock. In the RFP, it said that, you know, they're identified as opportunity areas for cell tower service in referencing the master plan wireless coverage maps. Sprint has a huge dead zone in that area, fair outdoor to no coverage in that area, as well as Verizon PCS. So using these maps, they help to hone in on, on sites that need service and, yeah, are also owned by the town, because we can't develop cell tower sites ourselves anywhere other than town properties, right? So at that point, we went out to RFP, and then that's when Keith and Laurel came in and selected them as the most suitable developers to partner with. So did you want to jump into the, the RFP part? Or I'll keep running with it, actually. So when we got to the Shinnecock Commercial Dock site, at and around this same time, we had started to, if you want to go to page three of your package. Anthony, can we go to?
Is that different?
Yeah. Yeah, perfect. So go to page three. So at and around this time, we had begun developing the Shinnecock Commercial Dock facility to serve a couple of different purposes. So we worked with the Fisher people at the site to help them figure out how they can start to export their own fish themselves. And that's where you see these gray areas to the left. And Nick, given as our capital project manager, developed this. The gray areas to the left near where the truck is, those are, that's like a loading dock, pack out area for refrigerated trucks, right? So we started to take this site from just a parking lot with equipment everywhere, and we started to create little pockets so that we could store the fishing equipment on the left side. We've got the pack out truck in the middle next to the electrical bank. And then we reorganized the parking area so that we could have more parking for the Fisher people. We could still have our cell tower site to the north of the property up there. And then we'd also looked at some paid parking or private parking for people to use the beach across the street. This hasn't panned out yet. We haven't moved forward with it, but we wanted to show you that in our future use of the site or future designs for the site, that we had kind of accounted for each piece of how we felt this site might build out. So we just want to show you that it's, it's kind of all there. This area is completely outside of our recent bulkhead deadman renovation, which is just to the north of where the cell tower is being proposed. You'll see like the existing parking lot that's not shaded gray. That's where all the, the structural supports are for the bulkhead system. So 21, 22, we did a lot of renovation work in there, and all of this work is proposed outside of any supports required for that, that bulkhead. So...
If I may just interject, Board Member Mu Too has arrived. You've got five people.
So do you want to jump into just service suitability?
One of the other things that the, the town had spoken about was using the revenue from the cell phone tower to make the planned improvements at the, at the dock station.
Yep, this is one of supervisor's projects at the time, and it was hopefully a partnership that would allow the future development of this site. So the potential revenue gained from having a tower at the site would then be utilized in turn to redevelop this site and make it better for, for kind of the backbone of the Hampton Bay's community, which is the commercial Fisher people.
Another suitable property for cell phone tower development in the area, if you go to the next page, with, uh, there is a town beach right at the end of the bridge.
Ponquaw.
Ponquaw. There's a large parking lot. However, visually, it was our opinion and the town's opinion that the dock station would be visually pleasing versus coming over the bridge and the direct line of sight to the cell phone tower that would be located on the beach. So if you go to the next couple of pages.
Also to answer a previous question, this tower serves a much greater area than, than one or two antennas placed in the coupla of the Ponquaw Pavilion. So it's like, it's kind of apples and oranges as far as impacts on the area.
In the coupla, there wouldn't be the visual issue that you just raised.
Right, just much less coverage, like significantly less coverage.
They could only have one carrier in that, in that area, even though there's three little spots that you think they could put them in. There'd be interference between antennas if you put one carrier here, and one carrier here, and one carrier here. It'd be hitting against each other.
Secretary, record points taken in that, you know, if we did put in the coupla, there would be no visual impacts, but that wouldn't achieve the goal of, of getting the service out here.
That's just, that'd help clarify it.
So if you, if you could click the...
Which one do you want to go?
That one's good. So when you're coming down the roadway, the park would be right at the end, so you'd see it dead on. So...
I think we've all, we've all driven over that bridge.
The next photo is a closer, uh, intersection. The star represents where the tower, you know, visually would be in that area.
So kind of two themes. One, if a tower was placed at Ponquaw versus the coupla. And then the other is, you know, if we put the tower at the commercial site, much further east of the property, not in the visual sightlines of those that most frequent that area, right? Most people are going to Ponquaw. There is a large number of people that go to, I don't know if it's still called Sundays.
Sunday's on the bay.
No, there, there are some restaurants down that way, but, but the vast majority, in our opinion, goes to the beach, right? So...
If you go to the next slide, it shows, um, basically the traffic ends at the beach entrance, and then we're down.
Where, but Sundays on the bay.
Yeah, on Sundays on the bay up there.
So just trying to give a geographical representation of distance between the forest area and where the proposed commercial dockage is. It's actually either even further east on this map, I believe. So... Talk about the elevations, the backup generator, the height of everything. So...
So everything will be to code. These will, everything will be raised up to eight feet. The generators, we are, we are, we can't be doing diesel or anything. It's going to be the propane or backup batteries. We believe it's probably going to be backup batteries for seven day supply of power.
The foundation is designed for the area for flooding as well.
Going to be piling or something like that, yeah.
When you talk about backup batteries, how many are we talking about since there is a sensitive, sensitivity in the community about battery storage?
Oh, yes. That's, uh, that battery storage is, that's commercial grade. The towers don't have a lot of power. The cabinet is, how big would you say the battery storage cabinet is per carrier? Maybe a two, two by three?
You know any kilowatt hours or, you know how many KW battery backup you're talking about?
I'm not sure. It's, it's usually for three days to keep running.
But in this, in this case, they would probably want seven days. That's usually why they put a generator in. Generators with diesel or propane are substantially cheaper than these batteries. But to answer your question, I do not know the exact kilowatts. It is fairly low energy.
Would it be similar to what would be allowed in a house, or is it something bigger than that? Do you know?
The exact details, like a Tesla power wall, I would say.
I actually have information on this, but I don't have it with me. Size and...
Exact size.
We'd love to resubmit the actual accurate information at a later point, but it's, it's likely multiple power walls if you were going to compare it to that. So definitely larger than a residential size.
That, that helps the community that might be listening.
Sure, of course.
And the only thing that becomes apparent and you factored in is the fact this road floods, I mean, not even during storms anymore. Sometimes high tide, if you have a protracted east wind. They keep the barricades there now.
Yeah.
And they'll close it off. So I'm assuming maintenance, the fact that in this type of maintenance, you need...
Are you assuming like what your maintenance schedule is, like are you there monthly?
Yeah, so maintenance during the summer, we will be there monthly, just trimming down if there's any weeds or anything like that. Bi-monthly during the winter months. And then really the only time the tower's being serviced is if something's being changed on the tower. So it's not, and that's usually all, it's all planned and coordinated.
So I've been down there during those storm surges. They're typically passable to the pickup truck for the most part. But if you really need to get there, you can get there.
Can get there, yeah, right in the middle of there.
And the Highland Department's always really good about trying to keep that open because there are a number of businesses being served. The dock is served. I remember when the bulb blew out, they were there, I think, same day, starting to...
The foot sign back.
Starting to backfill. So...
Yeah.
It is a risky area, but it's already a developed site with a dock there. So that building hasn't gotten washed away yet, thankfully. So, yeah, we're, it's all designed for, for those floods.
Well, Claire, are there any planning issues? I mean, should we think about any, is there any need for landscaping or?
I don't think landscaping. It's not a residential area.
Beechgrass or anything?
The less, the better, I think, you know, because it is beech grass. I mean, that would be the landscaping of the area, right?
Yeah.
So, no, not that, uh, from that perspective.
And lighting, you don't see an issue with lighting?
No, lighting is usually pretty low key with these things. They're just for security purposes, and that's all part of the requirement.
Okay.
The site's also screened in.
Yeah.
And fencing, so...
I think just having, we have a new code now with the tiers for best, right? So just wanting to get that accurate information and do an analysis against the code that exists now, you know, to make sure that...
Yeah, just double check. I think there is a percentage, there is a threshold for accessory to a commercial business.
Right, so if that's new, so we just have to evaluate.
Six hundred KW still is covered by...
Up to six hundred?
I believe so. That was the original intent, and I don't even...
Okay. Yeah, so it wouldn't be that big.
Yeah, we should have that, that information in the final package, so...
Okay, so put that on the plan as a condition and, and have it right in the condition? Okay.
And if that's not feasible, then we start talking about propane again.
Yeah, generator.
Yeah, which is the other option, which is probably fine too.
And the other thing that we had talked about, and, you know, sort of a general statement due to security concerns about the Coast Guard Tower, but it would be good to have a letter from Department of Defense indicating that that's not possible, just so that it's asked and firmly answered.
We can send them a letter. I cannot guarantee that they'll actually like write back to us, that they'll even entertain, but we can absolutely like certify.
How do you know the answer then? Is it written someplace in like a federal law or, you know what I mean? It's, there was sort of like a general blanket statement about that, but not really any concrete answer. So it's still lingering for me.
Well, not to be sarcastic, but...
I think that's putting a tremendous onus on the applicant to go and try to get a letter from the Department of Defense, which you may never get as a condition of approval on this, right?
It's a reason.
I think everybody who's ever dealt with any government agencies knows that they will not allow you to have a thing on that. They will not allow you to have, to go in there to do maintenance because there are a whole bunch of security issues happening. But as a condition, they may never get approved for this. I mean, sometimes you just have to say, take that as a, as a good, this is not going to happen. And, you know, you may never get a reply from them.
Probably won't.
Also, the carriers have had open search rings for this particular area for 20 years, and they have not been able to co-locate on that existing tower.
Are you able to say yet what the carriers are on the record or?
That have a, a search ring right there? Verizon, T-Mobile.
And T-Mobile.
And AT&amp;T, I'm sorry.
Oh, the three carriers, okay. So Claire, I, I'm assuming there's going to be resolution for us?
Yes, I have prepared a resolution for you.
Work session now, but...
Yes.
When were you thinking of acting on this?
Today.
Today, okay.
So I presented last time. I was starting to talk about SEACRA, and so there's one resolution for both issues. Just looking at the conditions right now. Right now, they say no additional lighting on property. The color shall be gray, blue, gray, light, blue, or silver. And then I'll add the notation has to be on what the, if it's going to be a battery pack. If not, do you want to approve an LP tank or a generator, or do you want to give them the option? I could say less than...
Well, less, just to check. I think, I'm pretty sure the 600 KW is the limit of being covered by...
Or it shall be LP, yeah, is the, is the other option, or?
Let's, let's see the sizes.
Get those answers before we consider approving it.
Yeah, subject to approval.
Subject to claim for approval, because we could, you could discuss it before you sign the plans.
Is there a light of some kind at the top of the tower? Because...
No, that would be more than 200 feet in there.
Also, there's no flag on this. It's, there's no flag.
So helicopter traffic or, you know, a tow plane or some, you know, because the village heliport is not all that far away on the other side of the canal. I just wondered if there's any FAA's...
Yeah, so we do have a no hazard from the FAA already. And then when this is, is built, it is, it goes on to their maps. So they do know this, this power exists, right?
It's there.
Yes, okay, okay.
Thanks.
It's actually, yeah.
So I pulled up some of the previous legislation from earlier this year, and it appears that 600 KW is the cutoff to the next tier of battery storage.
Is which one?
600 KW is the, yeah.
So Claire, we could, um, we could act on this then?
Yeah.
So any further questions from the applicant? What we'll probably do now is close the afternoon work session, convene the regular session, so we could, we could move forward with this. Claire, are there any conditions that you've highlighted?
Yes, so I just described them. They're on the second page. So this would be both your NAGDACK, and I'll update a little bit of the language that we just talked about in your environmental review. And then, as I said, the two conditions is no additional lighting, the color of the pole, and then I will add that a notation shall be that it should be battery storage, meeting the code of less than 600.
Do you need two resolutions?
If you want to do the two resolutions.
Better to do two, NAGDACK.
Yeah.
So the NAGDACK would be?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's unless it or type one?
Unless it.
Unless it. So our first resolution is to, uh, adopt declaration. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Gloria, second by George, all in favor. I oppose abstentions.
I'm in abstain.
One abstention, four yes, and that's for the NAGDACK. And then our second resolution is the approval with the conditions outlined on page two. And, uh, any other conditions?
Yeah, I think that's good.
Yeah, engineer, oh, engineering approval.
Engineer.
No.
Before we, before we go to that today, sorry, to just ask a question. So the condition for the battery might be up to 600 KW.
Yes.
And if it's, if it's bigger than that, then they probably have to come back for amendment to the...
Yeah.
So what's certain that is?
Larger? Oh, yeah, a greater.
SEACRA is required once you get over that, right?
Well...
Well, it changes the designation from a accessory use to a primary use. So it would be a different animal. So then you'd be talking about an alternative type of generator, yeah, on the property.
And now, if, to the code, that, that, the best code that talks about that, whichever section of code that talks about the 600 KW, are there specific requirements for that in terms of fencing and stuff like that that we need to meet, or is that?
You know what? I'm going to say in compliance with.
Right. But I think there's issues there that, you know, they may have to look at stuff like that.
So are you inserting?
There is definitely fencing with this that's more and above what you'd usually do with anything. So, but I'm going to put the section of the code in there.
Are you inserting that as a condition?
Yes.
With the parameters?
In compliance with that, with that section.
Compliance with that code. Okay, with that additional...
Well, I, so...
Which one do you want to move forward with?
So I think federally, the carriers have to provide backup power. So it's either or. I, I think pretty much every single site, they already have, they had backup batteries, no matter what, for three days. And then they have the, the generator for, you know, longer duration period of time. Also, each carrier likes to have their own generator, but we could try to work around that, obviously. So that's why the battery is a way better fit for...
Yeah.
So that would, so the bigger battery would be for everybody.
Within those parameters. Okay, with that, with that amendment, do we have a motion for approval? A motion by Tom, second by George, all in favor. I oppose abstaining. We have four yes and one abstention. Thanks so much for your patience and Tom, as always.
Thank you for putting this together. This was very helpful.
Yeah.
Yeah, really, very well.
It's very helpful to have all the background.
No, it's been a long time.
We're going a little out of order because Dave Wilcox is here, and...
After Dave will do the other work. Thank you, Tom.
I asked Dave to, he's on a busy...
Thank you, folks.
Thanks for coming back.
Yeah.
You've got a brief town board... Yeah, I apologize. This is not on the agenda. It's a walk-on.
Okay.
In order to accommodate the public hearing at the town board on August 12th, and we just got the referral.
This is a landmark.
So, yeah, this is a landmarks referral from the town board. The property is located at Methodist Point, also known as 11040 Flanders Road. This property, if you drive on Flanders Road over the years, maybe you saw this house across the water by the big duck. It was painted red, white, and blue for a while. The property historically has been a residence and a duck farm. The town owns the property now. It was acquired with CPF under Historic Preservation, Open Space and Recreation. And the town is nominating this property for landmark designation. The report that I believe you all got was prepared by Julie Green, the town historian. She did a great job with that.
Yeah.
We just, just for the public record, just, I'll read a few points from it. Historically, the property is known as Methodist Point, an original name that dates back to the ownership of Captain Charles Smith, 1763 to 1835, who quit subentally as my four times great grandfather. Smith moved to Sag Harbor from Matthias, Maine, late 1790s, and was a coastal trader and founding member of the Methodist Society of Eastern Long Island and the Sag Harbor Methodist Church in 1809, which coincidentally is how the name became Methodist Point. He moved to Flanders and established the home at Methodist Point after leaving Sag Harbor. Smith died in 1835. His wife, Dorcas Smith, continued to live on the property until her death and is buried at the Flanders Cemetery. In 1857, after the death of Dorcas, an auction advertised the property, read, quote, "That very pleasant and romantically situated homestead in late residence of Captain Charles Smith, deceased at Flanders in the town of Southampton, and consisting of about 25 acres of land, on which is a comfortable dwelling house, a barn, and an orchard, and a never failing spring near the door. The place is particularly valuable for privileges that surround it, such as fishing, yelling, et cetera, and being nearly surrounded by water." This was published in the Sag Harbor Corrector on October 1st, 1857. In 1858, the Smith family sold the 25 acres to John Griffin for $675. And John's son, Samuel Griffin, born 1831, as a young man, he made his livelihood working in the cordwood industry, shipping timber between Flanders and New Haven, Connecticut, before eventually settling down on the family's farm. And in 1884, Samuel established a duck farm on the site. The 4.5 acre property fronting on Greaves Bay contains three historic structures, a circa 18th century barn from the Smith era, a folk historian American vernacular style 19th century three-story house from the Griffin era, and a converted 19th century windmill pump house barn in the Griffin area. The structures have been identified as historically, as historic resources and contributing structures in the town's duck farming, maritime, and recreational history. The property was evaluated in the town's Southampton Resource Survey, prepared by AKRF in 2014, as a potential resource, and each structure possesses characteristics that are historically significant. It qualifies for historic designation under criteria A, C, and E. Criteria A possesses special character or historic or aesthetic interest or value as part of the cultural, political, economic, or social history of the locality, region, state, or nation. Criteria C embodies the distinguishing characteristics of an architectural type, period, or style, or contains elements of design, details, materials, or craftsmanship which, which represent a significant innovation. And criteria E, because of a unique location or singular physical characteristic that represents an established and familiar visual feature of the, of the property or area. So that is the report from Julie Green. As I said, the town board is holding a public hearing on August 12th, and they need a report or recommendation from you.
That's very comprehensive. I mean, Flanders is a real gem as far as more and more historic sites with cemetery and the old structures. It's really comfortable. I think we're all supportive of the designation.
Sandal through CPF, is that how that works?
What was that?
Maintenance of the property is...
Once it's historic, CPF can pay for the maintenance.
Will be open to the public, you know?
I, I don't know. I don't know if they have a firm plan for what they're going to use the property for yet.
You can see it across, from that new walkout path and boardwalk, right?
Yes, yes.
Okay, yeah.
So our action then is to adopt a resolution in support of the landmarking. Do we have a motion?
Motion by Gloria and second by Kate, all in favor. I oppose abstentions. We have five yes. Dave, thanks for your patience.
Thank you.
Tom, did you have something for us?
We are criticating the West Hampton Activity Center.
That's going to be on the regular agenda.
Regular agenda, okay. One or two ahead of you. Anthony, where are we?
That is, that is actually on the new agenda. That is the second thing on it.
Oh, that's the second thing.
Because we already did the Shinnecock Dock.
Oh, okay.
Oh, yeah, so...
Oh, that's number two on the agenda.
The agenda got scrambled from the original.
Anthony, could we, that's, that's on number two on our agenda. Yeah, let's, let's jump in, because that way we can go in order and then we'll...
How are you?
This is item two on the agenda, West Hampton Activity Center. We have Tom Hatton, Town Engineer. Could we have your name, sir?
Nicholas Jimenez, Capital Projects Manager.
Thanks.
Help yourself. Save us from eating it.
Oh, I didn't eat much yet.
That's, that's supper between afternoon and evening sessions.
I guess. I came before you guys last month with the West Hampton Activity Center application. You've placed a condition on the application that lighting poles will be a maximum of 10 feet high. And I'm here to request that that condition be relaxed. To go down to 10 feet essentially doubles the amount of required site lighting that we would, or the site lighting poles that we would need to install. It's a significant expense to the town to double the site lighting and...
What kind of height were you thinking of?
Proposed on the plans was 14, excuse me, 16 feet.
16 is...
So it's in keeping...
It's a tough one. It's our code.
We, we... Code does allow you guys to, I brought it here, because I think this would come up. Does allow the planning board to go higher than that if it's demonstrated to the satisfaction of the board that a greater mounting height would better accomplish the purposes of the lighting article. So again, it's a community center that'll be used by youth and seniors. So we are concerned that the lighting levels are appropriate. We also want to provide a lighting design that is... So we are concerned that the lighting levels are appropriate. We also wanna provide a lighting design that is, um, economically feasible for the town.
Can understand the quandary we're in, though. We have whole flood of private party applicants coming with sixteen-foot poles, and we have to tell them, no, go shorter, and then when our project comes in, oh, sixteen is fine. So you're gonna, I think my sentiment is you're gonna have to bring it down, maybe.
See, I respectfully disagree. I mean, we can make full cutoffs, we can meet dark skies, so it's essentially just the height of a pole.
The thing is that every applicant can do that, too.
Yeah.
Um, if there is a height between sixteen and ten that you would consider, every foot helps us decrease the amount of poles on site. So if ten is ten, then we'll double the poles and we'll increase the budget and all of that. If we could do fourteen, twelve, like if.
Okay, with fourteen, I can live with fourteen. I just can't, I can't.
It's our own code. That's really difficult for us to say, okay, it's fine to.
We've done fourteen.
Fourteen substantially more helpful than ten.
Yeah, nothing's written in stone, but.
Of course, but you, you still have to answer to everybody else who also has for sixteen, so we understand the, the board's situation.
Just can't go with sixteen.
What's the spread on that? I mean, it would be useful to have some information from our planners to know, you know.
Where, where we've done.
Where we can deviate and what's a reasonable accommodation. It, I'm feeling a little discomfort with this.
It is a public facility. I mean, that's part of the balancing.
It's a public facility for the public benefit that is permitted by the senior community.
Yeah.
At night.
We want you to have enough lighting.
Must have enough lighting. The issue is, it's an expense, it's an added expense to the town to provide ten-foot poles versus fourteen-foot poles. And is that enough to justify lowering the standard?
Is Claire reviewing this?
She was, yeah, I don't know where she went.
All right, so why don't we, we wanna just table it for, take the next applicant, we'll talk and then come back.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
I, I, I would like to understand where we've increased it beyond ten, because otherwise I think we're opening ourselves to everything.
Ten is not written, we've, we've gone higher than ten. Ten's not written in stone.
How often have we done that and, and where?
Yeah.
Very understandable.
Yeah.
And if you could bring on the original site plans.
Commercial applicants coming in and saying, you gave it to the town.
Uh, you see hundreds of those a year and we're one project, so.
Yeah.
But you don't see hundreds of town projects. Again, this isn't a, you know, commercial shopping center for profit, this is for the public benefit. And the lighting would also benefit the public, so.
We want you to have.
Wanted to be well lit, sufficiently lit, right? But, you know, there's always the case, people who would say, and I, I agree with that sentiment, that the town should be setting the example in their designs that we, that we require from private applicants. You know, it's, it's another point selling applicants who come in here routinely that you gotta do ten feet, and then we say, well, you know, we wanna save money that we, you know, we, we wanna go twenty feet.
Yeah, we understand that puts you in a tough position. I say we understand that puts you in a tough position. We're trying to work within supervisor's budget, um, but if the board says.
But it's, it's a budgetary issue, right? One way that you'll provide, you need to provide the current lighting.
Let's get some info from Claire and.
Lighting code is if it better meets the statute of the lighting code, which in this case, it's not the case it meets the budget.
Well, I could meet dark skies with full cutoff lights and zero light intrusion onto the adjacent properties. So it really comes down to an aesthetic thing, like nobody, for whatever reason, has decided that sixteen feet is aesthetically objectionable as opposed to fourteen feet. I don't know why that was established, but that's what we're discussing, frankly.
Have we located Claire or she? So we'll, we'll circle back to this shortly.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Anthony, do you wanna jump in here?
It's gonna be very, uh.
This is a walk-on?
It's a walk-on, uh, uh, just before the property, I wanna move forward with, with this, I just wanted to get the planning board's okay, I'll do most of the talking.
How are you, Jay? Good to see you. Status name for the audio record, so we have it.
Jay Schneiderin. Uh, this is a property located at two forty-four Little Neukin Path, it's in the Aquifer Protection Overlay District. It's subject to a maximum clearing of twenty-five percent based on the size of the property, which would give it twenty-nine thousand seven hundred and seventeen square feet of clearing. They have an existing clearing of forty-four thousand eight hundred and forty square feet, which is thirty-seven point seven, uh, percent. I met with Jay to see how they could rectify this through a combination of maybe transferring some clearing rights and revegetation. Advised Jay that typically when the planning board's doing a transfer, they'll go up to the next percentage, um, to, to, just to give them some type of baseline to do this. So what Jay was proposing is that they would like to bring in enough credits to get to the thirty-five percent, which would allow the clearing of this property at forty-one thousand six hundred and five, and that that would revegetate then the remaining. And before his client goes and closes and buys development rights and all the rest, wanted to make sure the board was okay with this.
Is there a re-veg plan we have yet?
Not yet, not yet. Just like I said, before they go through this whole expense, I just wanted to make sure I was in line with our policy.
Mostly within that circular driveway is gonna.
Yeah, you could see this property is pretty, pretty good vegetation, but.
In there.
Happens when people get it.
Are they gonna buy, are you gonna buy off-site property or how are you into that?
The town has some Pine Barrens credits that he intends to.
Yeah, I'm working with Dave Wilcox, actually, he's aware of this.
Probably, s- not a full credit, a little more than half a credit.
It can be used in this area.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. The good thing is when we're dealing with this, we try to make it, you know, environmentally, like in a connection, but we don't have to worry about school district because of density purposes and stuff like that, so.
But it would be something.
It'll reconcile, yeah.
It would be, it would be in, in that neighborhood, cause I always think of Pine Barrens credits in the West.
Yeah, I don't, I, you know, I gotta see where, where they're doing this from.
By hydrological zone or something, but it's within the same, it's, it'll be an allowable Pine Barrens credit, and I think the Pine Barrens Commission has to sign off on it as well, right?
Yeah, they do, yeah, when you're doing that.
It's not the Pine Baron Zone, though.
Yeah, it's nowhere.
I don't think it's under their jurisdiction. I don't believe.
I have to look.
If you used a credit, I'm told they have to sign off. Uh, we looked at TDRs, but I guess we can't use TDRs in this zone either, so I think Pine Barrens credits are what is typically applied here.
Uh, I, you know, I've, I've seen on one or two occasions where a Pine Barrens credit has been used, um, but let me look, I, I wasn't sure where the credits are coming from. But, uh, as a, you know, with the understanding, you still have to approve, you know, everything where it's coming from, we gotta deal with it. The concept of transferring some type of clearing credit and then revegetation.
We're supportive of the concept, so.
And where it's coming from, he's got, we gotta work out.
Gotta work out logistics.
We're not taking an action or anything.
Person who's renting it is trying to buy it, he's got a, uh, I think, six-week-old kid, he, you know, he'd like to have a little lawn.
Sure.
So, a- and if there's a mechanism to get up from twenty-five percent to thirty-five percent, um, then he will buy this property.
Yeah.
So right now it's cleared more than thirty-five percent.
Yeah.
It's just about thirty-seven percent.
Thirty-seven, yeah.
Just over.
So, and Dave's already approached me about this, so he's aware of it, so he's looking and working with, with, with the applicants.
Are we doing any action this time?
No action, I just wanted to make sure.
The consent of the planning board to allow for the transfer so that we can get from twenty-five percent to thirty-five percent.
Combined with revegetation.
Revegetation, yeah.
Twenty-seven hundred square feet of revegetation.
I think you're hearing that, um, we have it on the record to give you client.
Openness to considering it, right? I mean, you don't have all the information at hand, so when the application comes in, we can't say, yes, you're gonna get approved.
But the concept.
Well, the concept, we're proving the concept, not unheard of.
That you would allow to go up to thirty-five percent with the proper.
The intended outcome of that same, the credit purchased from that same area, because it is a sensitive groundwater management area.
That's, that's would be by.
Yeah, I.
Groundwater management really cut in, is this question of flow. I don't think there's an issue with flow here. This is groundwater zone four, I believe.
It is APOD.
Really, it's a question of.
Clearing.
Clear.
Yeah.
It doesn't really matter. I mean, if you do, if you can find the, the right mechanism, then you, you gotta do something else.
Yeah.
Well, typically you can use Pine Barrens credits for. But I can't promise the Pine Barrens credit is gonna be from this neighborhood, it, it's gonna be from the hydrological zone.
It's like a reconciliation, like.
People have approached, there are a couple of landowners.
Right, there's a, I don't know that.
You're reconciling another account to this account.
I know the town has some TDRs, but I don't know if the TDRs can be used here.
I don't know.
The mechanism is compliant with the law, then.
So that's something you worked out with Anthony and Dave?
But, yeah, I mean, th- this board can't approve anything specific today. They don't have anything.
Wilcox, their whole list, I mean, there are a couple of landowners that have extensive old file map holdings. And they, they're, we've seen that in the past, they've made those available to.
Right, there's private credits, there's also, the town owns credits.
Yeah. I don't know how they can be used, I think they, there might be limitations, affordable housing or something like that, I don't know.
TDRs, but not the Pine Barrens credits.
Yeah.
The old Conklin credits the town still has, that can, the money goes toward affordable housing.
Right.
The credits can be sold at large, but the revenue the town gets must go toward affordable housing.
Good, so I think, you know.
Joe Gosa might have some.
There's a.
Joe Gosa might have some credits.
In that area.
I didn't want to put his name on the record.
We will do what we have to, acceptable credits.
Right. Well, that's it, Jay, the thing we're saying is a combination of re-veg and transfer.
Right, right.
They are open to, we gotta figure out where it's coming from.
Yeah.
Work with Seth and planning department on whatever the re-veg plan is that's acceptable to.
Good, perfect.
Okay, so that's it, conceptual.
Concept, you're right.
Yes, okay, we're on board.
Good with the concept.
Yeah, he doesn't wanna close and then find out he can't legalize it, that's, that's the scary part.
Yeah, let's, let's talk, Jay, and let's look at where, where they're coming from.
Get it done.
Appreciate it, thank you.
And did Claire, I saw Claire.
She's talking to them outside.
Oh, she's talking about that. Anthony, did you wanna?
Jump starting myself, yeah.
Sure, let's do another one.
Number five?
Number five, okay.
The Trador, that's the bocce ball courts.
Oh, yes.
So we're gonna do an exten- extension until, is it August fourteenth by next meeting? August fourteenth.
Very good, do we have a motion? Motion by, uh, Kate, second by Gloria, and all in favor?
Aye.
I oppose, abstentions, five yes, two absent.
Central.
Okay, keep going. Mindful.
Yeah, I'm cool. You see Claire.
Substantial thinner than mine.
Yeah. There's, um, staff report and resolution.
You're doing brown boot? Brown boot. Small, we even numbered these as, this is the one that's the old.
Well, it's a pool contractor, yeah.
Oh, the, it was the gilof, okay.
Yeah, the other one that we do today is the Cox Garden site.
Yeah, and then there's a third one, but that backs up to the Taco School, right?
Yeah, that one's in the pre-application.
Okay.
Everyone remembers this site.
This is on country.
No, this was a site, actually, that has full site plan approval, so by and large, what we were looking at was a special exception application. And then, of course, we always look to see what we could do on a site that's, um, already been approved. Uh, highway business zoning district, um. That's this site here, pretty well screened, everything's existing, um, landscaping. So everyone's familiar where the property is, this is for cannabis, so it's gonna go from a special trade contractor to a cannabis retailer. Um, I'm just looking at the report right now on page one, and, um, subject to the general and special conditions. We had a public hearing on June twelfth, and it was closed with a ten-day written comment period, uh, we didn't get any comments on this application. Uh, SECR, this was a unlisted action, uh, this space was just over four thousand square feet, and the planning board issued a negative declaration on May eighth. Uh, we did referrals to the involved agencies, town engineer provided a memorandum April seventh. Uh, it was just a checklist of a few items, but there really wasn't much, uh, as there's not really any site improvements, um, occurring here. Fire prevention, um, is, what did they say here? They didn't say much here, uh, but they would, would re-review during the formal building review, so, just so the board knows, th- there will be, when you do a, a building permit application, the fire marshal gets involved again, and that's when they start looking at very specific building state code requirements, so, um, nothing here, uh, really came to the site plan. Public Works hasn't, uh, provided comments yet, uh, and I know they've been going back and forth. What I did was in our, um, resolution, I have a, you know, condition in there that a final curb permit is supposed to be secured from the DPW. I had talked to them, they were going back and forth here, th- they, they don't know that they wanna put a sidewalk out in this particular location yet. Um, they were raising questions about it, so they're going to either require it or not require it. So if, if they require it, the site plan will have to show it on there, if they don't, then, you know, they don't. But they're still working through that. The Architecture Review Board, uh, no changes to the elevations at this time, but if they do make any changes, including any materials, windows, or doors, they would have to go back to planning and they are big. Uh, the fire district, uh, came back and they're recommending the building be sprinkled and equipped with knock boxes. Highway Department said there are no recommendations at this time, uh, and the Suffolk County Planning Commission on June thirteenth stated the matter, the project is a matter for local determination. Um, we have the general, uh, general special exception standards, so A, um, usable, promote the general purpose and intent of this chapter. Um, again, um, this is a non-medical cannabis use, um, and it's consistent with the zoning and land use requirements. Uh, the applicant also submitted the radius map, um, we have, it's actually, I don't even think listed as a requirement, but we do ask that they submit a radius.
What are the, uh, what are the special standards, uh, Anthony?
For what, a setback, you mean?
For the special exception standards for the, for this use.
They're, they're next, actually.
Oh, okay.
Well, these are just the general ones, so I'll, I'll.
Yeah.
Uh, be the plot area sufficient, um, it's an existing thirty-eight thousand square foot lot, um, for which the improvements were approved by the planning board in two thousand and twelve, so I, I think it's good, um, in terms of size. Uh, the orderly and reasonable use of adjacent sites, um, again, these are all in the highway business zoning district. This cross-access with this adjacent site to the west has already been opened as part of the previous site plan approval. Uh, there's some grade changes here, um, I don't know that doing a cross-access over here does, um, any good, doesn't get us to a safer location to come out of the site, so this is already in place, which is good. Um, the residential zoning districts actually don't abut this property, so there wasn't, uh, any transitional setback issues, but we still have the approved landscaping plan in the back that remains intact, so that will just, uh, remain. Oh, yeah, it says it right there, and that's, so we would maintain that. Site is particularly, uh, suitable, again, it's highway business, approved, um, permitted by special exception, you know, subject to the standards. Uh, not located near a church, school, theater, or any other place of public assembly, uh, not in this location. F talks about, uh, compliance with the definition, uh, we don't have a definition of non-medical cannabis, uh, but we do have different standards between medical and non-medical, so we're able to differ- differentiate between the two, um, to ensure this one complies. Access facilities, um, are adequate, they're existing in this case and are already established. Uh, and again, if it's not there now, no left turns onto Montalk Highway will, I mean, onto County Route thirty-nine, uh, which I believe, actually, there is a sign there, if I remember correctly, but if not, there'll, there will be one. All curb cuts have been approved, um, by the agencies, so, um, they will require a curb cut, uh, from the town, although the highway department said they don't have any issues, um, and the, that should say the DPW there, not DOT. I'll fix that. Uh, off-street parking spaces, um. I just wanted to make sure I got this right. So, yeah, they're, they're saying that there's twenty-six parking spaces are required and provided. I actually calculated, it's twenty-seven parking spaces are required, it appears only twenty-three are provided. Um, they're using the parking waiver on this thing, technically, the parking waiver, this is a cross-access agreement. Really, what you're looking at is a public access easement, think what you did for Flying Point Road over there. Where everybody in the town could go through there, so it really doesn't qualify for the, uh, ex- exemption. However, um, I, I, I think they can meet the parking requirement with some sharpening of the pencil. Um, there's, you know, there's storage space in there, there's some, uh, in, there's a couple of bays that you could have interior, so I think they, uh, can fix that, so we noted that.
I think, I believe also their business model rested heavily on a delivery component.
Yeah, uh, yeah, yeah, and Brown Boot has been very public about that, they do rely on that. Uh, but they can make the numbers work, they're, they're pretty close here, so.
Good.
We'll get them to fix that.
Good.
Uh, adequate buffers, um, again, um, the rear is buffered from a two-twelve, twenty-twelve, um, site plan. I didn't notice, I could have been wrong about this. No, actually, there's, there's, there's no stuff sitting in the buffer back here, it's actually within the pavement portion, but there wasn't anything in the buffer. I was saying to it to be removed, um, but it doesn't look like it's in there. Stormwater collection, uh, again, this was an approved site plan, which all the drainage had been considered previously, and again, final sign-off from the engineer is gonna be required. L, no outdoor sales lot, uh, rental equipment or storage areas. There's none of those here, and they would be made, um. There's none of those here, and they would be made, um, a condition of approval. Uh, and then M talks about the specific conditions, uh, which we're going to go through now. A, B, and C, um, on the, uh, special conditions, talk about the separation distances. So I sort of just combine all those and, um, based on a radius map that we're giving, and the radius map shows there are no schools, community centers, or places of worship, um, and that all required separation distances have been met. D is the 1,000-foot, um, separation between other facilities. This one is not within 1,000 feet of the closest facility, uh, and I, uh, verified with the, uh, proximity protection from the state, which is mapped online. E was the traffic analysis. We did a traffic analysis with this. Prepared by Dunn Engineering, February 2025. Again, none of them are identifying any significant, uh, traffic impacts. We're going to do no left turns on the County Route 39. Uh, curb cuts, uh, permit from the Suffolk County Department of Public Works, so if there's anything else that they require, they'll be incorporated into the site plan. F talks about buffers in transitional yards. Again, this property actually is not subject to the 100-foot transitional setback, um, so it's not applicable. Uh, but we do have the buffering in the back, you know, nearest the residential properties, and we'll maintain that in this case. Uh, G, again, is the transitional setback, not applicable here. H, the overall appearance layout of the cannabis dispensary. Again, it's an existing building, um, that's actually very well screened, so I don't think there's any issues there. There's no changes to the building at this time, but, uh, it would require ARB if they do anything different. Uh, parking requirements, um, as we noted before, they have to adjust those numbers. J's about the outdoor speakers. Um, there'll be no outdoor speakers or music, and that will be made a condition of approval. The pedestrian, uh, circulation plan, of course, you know, we got a pedestrian circulation plan, uh, when we looked at the traffic study. Wasn't much in this case. Everything sort of hinges on that the county's going to require anything. So if they do, they'll be incorporated.
Anthony, uh, on that point, I'd like to suggest that we be in favor of them asking for a sidewalk with a mountable curb. Anywhere that we can, uh, improve access, as we know, County Route 39 width is very tight. Wherever we can get a mountable curb that could be used for emergency, um, pull-over vehicles or whatever, I think we should be asking for that.
What I'll say, Tom, is although, uh, DPW comments are pending at this time, the planning board notes that, um, a sidewalk, um, in front of, you know, is a preferable design.
And I would put in there with a mountable curb.
With a mount, yes, I agree. And then, you know, we'll see what they, they do from there.
We feel a lot of that.
Yep, that they're, they're, they're looking at bigger picture too, so they're seeing who's doing what, you know, and.
And they had proposed adding sidewalks a couple of years ago.
Internal debate about this, uh, particular site, so it'll be interesting to see what they.
Well, let's lean in favor of, try to, try to lean them that way.
Uh, drive-through windows are prohibited, so we, we. Approval. Uh, the signage regulations, again, signage is subject to review and approval by the planning board, um, and we incorporate all the OCM, um, requirements. Uh, N talks about the licenses. Uh, the applicant shall submit copies of licenses and our permits that have been obtained in accordance with all applicable state and local regulations. Security systems, so obviously, they'll put together a detailed safety management plan, uh, with all of the lighting, security cameras, uh, and the methods that they will use to discourage, um, any issues on the site. Particularly people hanging out and, you know, because they're not supposed to be consuming on site. Uh, hours of operation will be from 10:00 AM to 9:00 PM. Um, and we would like to limit the delivery services to those same hours. We've been doing that as a condition.
How do we police that?
I don't have an answer for you, Gloria. I don't. I, I mean, I, I, I hear you, I hear you, but I, it, it, somewhere it should be stated, um, because you know, it, it'll be the next thing, it'll be phone calls coming in facilities and traffic coming in at midnight or something, so.
Code enforcement, yeah.
We put it in and see. They should be operating within the, I'm hoping that the regulation through the state also are going to encourage people not to do anything foolish to use their licenses.
Operating under state licenses, so.
Sorry, it's our only remaining site plan issues. Uh, lighting is, uh, existing. They should just note it on the plan. And we'll put the typical conditions in there. Uh, ma- landscape is existing, and I showed the board here. That looks pretty good. I don't know that I would do anything else, but they should note the back as a naturally vegetated buffer.
Is there any requirement for additional lighting because of the security issues?
They haven't proposed any, have they?
No, I, I, most of the lighting, uh, and, and, and that they talk about, um, on entrances, um, exit areas, uh, security cameras at different vantage points, but the state didn't get specific about lighting, so we're going to rely on our, uh, lighting code.
Okay.
At this point, unless someone tells me it's different, we're going to just impose our lighting standards. Let's see. Signage is subject to our approval. Uh, engineering, final engineer and sign-off, uh, which should be easy. There's not a lot of work done here. Site plan indicates a dumpster enclosure area, fencing and screening details need to be provided. I don't believe a septic system is requi- a new septic system is required for this change of use. Uh, screen mechanicals on the roof and on the ground. Uh, and then, of course, we encourage the sustainability, um, design elements into a site plan, um, and including, uh, two EV charging stations.
So Anthony, you have a resolution for us? Do you want us, you want to just focus on the conditions?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, the first one, the first page, it's the resolution adopting the staff report, uh, and approving this special exception, uh, application of Brown Buddha. Convert the 4,200 square foot building into a cannabis retailer. Uh, subject to the following conditions, A, it's a submission of a safety management plan. Again, demonstrating compliance with all state and local, uh, requirements. The applicant shall provide adequate security and code compliant lighting on site to ensure safe persons protection. Again, this is just language from the state. They don't get very specific. So again, we're going to rely on our lighting, uh, code. Good. Uh, the areas to be covered by security cameras, again, storage areas, dispensing areas, doors, uh, parking lots, uh, such like that. I know the planning board didn't pose, they don't want any freestanding, um, video cameras in the parking lots, and that's perfectly fine, um, but I believe the Office of Cannabis Management does want something on the building facing the parking lot, so. Uh, I just wanted to differentiate between those two. Signage, again, so we listed the, uh, signage requirements, and again, to be subject to planning board approval. Uh, E, the applicant shall take reasonable steps to discourage and correct any, uh, conditions on site, people hanging out, um, stuff like that. Not supposed to have any onsite, uh, consumption. Uh, submission of copies of all the necessary permits from the Office of Cannabis Management. On-site consumption of cannabis products is prohibited. Drive-through windows, uh, drive-through window service is prohibited. Hours of operation, uh, be limited to 10:00 AM to 9:00 PM, and the delivery services shall be limited to those same hours. And the second resolve is the approval of the actual site plan special exception application, uh, subject to the following conditions, A, the town engineer final sign-off, uh, B, secure the, um, curb cut permits, uh, from the DPW and incorporate any additional changes to the site plan they require. Depict two EV charging stations, show the dumpster along with the fencing and screening details. Note the vegetated areas in the back as a naturally vegetated buffer, consistent with the prior approved site plan. And add a no-exit sign at the entrance to CR 39. Uh, changes to the lighting plan, there really isn't. At this point, though, we just say that if new lighting is proposed, uh, new plan would need to be provided with photometric data. Uh, the existing lighting should be noted on the plan. Um, any lighting should be projected downward, uh, and any new lighting fixtures, um, be subject to a maximum height of 10 feet. Uh, changes to the landscaping plan, um, really, there are none now, other than noting the back as a, as a buffer, which I think. Provide a final floor plan for both the retail building and the storage building, signed, sealed by the licensed design professional. Uh, general conditions of approval, all final maps should be signed and sealed by the licensed design professional. Uh, two EV charging stations shall be provided. Uh, all signage is subject to planning board review and approval. All HVAC mechanical systems shall be, uh, screened. Uh, the design of the lighting shall be dark sky compliant for any new lighting. Installation of dust-to-dawn lighting fixtures is prohibited. Uh, no additional lighting without planning board approval. All lighting shall be shielded downward. Uh, freestanding security cameras, which are located within the parking lot, are not permitted. That came from a previous resolution. I wasn't here for that one. That's good. Uh, submission of an affidavit indicating compliance with the site plan standards. Uh, obtain all necessary permits from the highway department and DPW. And arrange for a pre-construction meeting with the town engineer. And then, um, to be completed prior to signature, a final town engineer approve. Some of these are repetitive, I think. Well, final town engineer approval, submission of the signed affidavit, uh, and then submission of the six sets of plans for.
How are we handling the sidewalk with the mountable curb condition? Are we, is that a recommendation, or is that?
Well, I, we do have in there that the plans would need to be subject to final approval from the DPW. They would need to be modified for any DPW requirements. And Tom indicated that we would put in our, um, report at least, and I could do it, uh, that the planning board's preference would be that they support sidewalk, uh, with a mountable curb, uh, in front of the site.
So that's going to be, uh, that's not going to be a condition.
It's not going to be a condition, uh, because it's going to be hinges on that DPW.
Okay.
So, Anthony, I mean, these are the first sets of site plans which are specifically requiring security cameras, right? Other, other site plans, if we have regular site plans, people may add security cameras at the, where they, where they need to, but these actually require security cameras.
Yeah, I think state requirement.
Yeah, but the reason, what I'm getting at is, is it's a little bit silent as to, you can get pure security cameras, and then you can get security cameras that are packed, packaged with a couple of floodlights. We shouldn't be encouraged, or, I mean, I'm assuming we should only be wanting security cameras and not floodlights, which then adds lighting sometimes, you know, facing traffic, facing parking lots, where it can be. So how do, how do, do we need to address that specifically?
Preclude, s- security lights on the security.
So what I'll say is any, uh, security cameras required by the, you know, for, for this project shall not have any flood lighting, um, you know.
Motion sensor lighting, I guess. Like a motion sensor.
And maybe we should start adding that to other site plans too, for the ones who choose to put security cameras on the, on the property.
I mean, or you. Brian Macasio wants to chime in here.
Okay.
There are certain state requirements.
Hi, Brian. Come on up and just identify yourself with the.
Brian Macasio with the Adam Miller Group, attorney for the applicant.
Let's see.
Um, we're fine with all this, but there are certain requirements as to light and cameras that the state does require, so we are going to be subject to those.
They, they, they require the lights?
Yep.
Could that conflict with our dark sky compliant lighting?
That's the point I was getting.
Well, you could, yeah. Create them with dark, with the shield.
That's, I think we could still meet dark sky requirements and lighting.
Yeah, it'd have to be dark sky.
And I think your resolution already, we can't add any light to that, your approval, anyway. I think you've already covered.
Well, I mean, they say, they do say they have to be dark sky compliant. We don't differentiate. We just say their lighting has to be dark sky compliant.
If the security camera has a floodlight with it, the floodlight has to be dark sky.
It's got to have the shielded.
Yeah.
Okay, it's good to know.
We should, uh, but I'll put that language in there as a board, you know, that, you know, in addition, the security, um, camera, that's maybe required, uh, lighting, um, shall also be, uh, dark sky compliant.
Not like the standard anywhere.
Floodlights and stuff like that.
And something's at the door, right?
Yeah, exactly. If someone comes in the parking lot at 2:00 in the morning, it's going to just.
After hours.
Just scare them off and let the camera record them. It's not something that'll be on all night.
But a lot of the cameras now are recorded.
I just think we have to dial out that there are state requirements you have to meet here, right, under our license, so.
It's just confusing the way it's written, because it says if any lighting is added or changed, then it has to be part of a lighting plan, so if there is intent, you know, because of the state law.
Like, we have some minimal lighting for our walkway we're creating.
Yep, 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 yep.
There is a lighting plan that's been submitted, you know, we've submitted our security plan, but, um, we understand there are town requirements you have to meet, and we, of course, will meet those.
Okay. Brian, are there any other issues that?
The only question I wanted to discuss was the requirement for the two EV parking spaces.
Right.
It just seemed like a financial burden. Uh, we're just requesting a change of use for an improved site. We're not redeveloping the site. I understand the push and the desire to have those. It's just, uh, we're trying to open a retail store and the requirement to put in the sidewalk was a, you know, it's an expensive undertaking. It's, I.
Yeah, I mean, you're not constructing, they're not digging up the parking lot.
Yeah, like, if we were laying a new parking in the infrastructure, then it's.
You're not doing drainage or any.
Nope, it's all there. It's pretty established, so.
No, and I have another applicant that's going to discuss this with you today. Couple things I didn't really think of, but, 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 just to differ- differentiate, let's say something like, um, Ashley Caprero and Brown Buddha. Brown Buddha, I mean, um, Bud Hampton, where they are going to be, um.
Redoing the.
Doing a new light there near a shopping center. There's a whole the other, people could go there and potentially go somewhere else and charge a car. Someone raised the issue with me today, saying if you have a single-use site, like, you know, we're doing cannabis, and the Office of Cannabis Management, you can't have people hanging around, smoking and everything else. You want people sitting there for an hour charging the car.
The only people that are going to be there.
It raised an interesting question, and I, so I just want to be able to differentiate between what we did on, let's say, Bud Hampton versus, you know, something like this for them.
Well, yeah, I mean, it's a valid point. They're not digging up, I, I know it's involved in trenching in these, these, uh, EV stations. It's quite extensive. If you're not, if you're not redoing the whole parking lot drainage, you know, so. That's a valid point. I think we could eliminate that. Anything else, Brian?
And the DPW has approved our plan, the sidewalk plan, which.
You have a sidewalk plan, then?
Yes.
Because I remember when we discussed it, they weren't sure.
But then there was a, in the meantime, we received a call, or, um, Raina Group received a call, that the county was internally still debating whether or not they want the sidewalk, so our plan has been approved.
Okay.
There's still a discussion apparently going on whether or not.
Is that the mountable curbs?
I don't know if it's mountable. I have to have that discussion with, I mean, Gordy Allen's office, but.
We should.
Well, we, we will incorporate that now into the resolution.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, with those two.
Otherwise, um, no, we were.
Good to go with that.
We appreciate everything.
Okay, do a motion for, for approval? Motion by George, second by Gloria, and all in favor. I oppose abstentions.
We were okay with the no-EV spaces, right?
Correct, yeah, we're going to take out the EVs.
Yeah, okay.
Good, Brian.
Forget us those mountable sides.
Claire, we had a.
I prayed you.
Robust discussion on the lighting poles, anything to shed?
We're gonna, we're gonna just table that.
We're gonna table that.
Table that. I'll talk to them about that. Yeah, so, and I'll look at what, uh, hear what you said to say, so. We have Bridhamton Commons.
Bridhamton Commons, item three.
Should be pretty straightforward. This is the last facet of the Bridhamton Commons target.
Hi, welcome. Tell us, uh, your name.
Brian Kennedy for the applicant, according with Port Chilly, you can surround.
Very good, welcome.
Uh, so we have latest plans, and this is for the parking lot, where they had to, uh, go to the zone walkways for the six spaces to be waived to create the, the corral and the, uh, pickup, uh, right? Places, and just because of what the walkways and such. So, um, if you want to see the plans, are you pretty familiar with the site? So I have passed out a decision with some conditions related to this. It gives a little bit of, um, the history, how we got here. SECRE, it's a type, third item, it's a type-two action. The ZBA granted the waiver for the six p- spaces. I described the two actions you've taken to date, which is the, uh, truck loading, uh, dock approval, the signage, front facade changes in the gray ballards, in the front. Um, that was approved on March 13th and the 27th. Uh, public hearing was waived at the June 26th. Um, and no public comments were received during the 30-day written comment period. Verals were sent to the town engineer, who said it was complete, um, and then the fire marshal had their comments, which, um, pretty standard comments, which is proposed work shall not be emergency vehicle access to the property. All requirements for the site plan review, uh, 25 dash zero zero three, and additional fire and life safety concerns will be addressed during the formal building review.
So you've got some conditions for us?
Yes, the general conditions. The site plan looks pretty good. Obviously, it's a fully reviewed site, so we're just changing the use and having the parking spaces. Uh, the LED lighting fixtures should be 2,700 K or less. Uh, all HVAC systems shall be screened. Uh, lighting code should, uh, lighting shall be dark sky compliant. No dusted lawn lighting fixtures, no additional lighting on the property. All outdoor lighting shall be projected downward. Um, this is the engineering requirement, pre-construction meeting, compliance, the fire marshal comments, and any and all future signs shall be subject to planning board review and approval. And then, just the town engineer needs to issue their final approval on this, and, uh, the payment of the engineering fee and the affidavit and six sets of plans.
Mr. Kennedy, any issues for us?
Thank you for your guidance throughout this process.
Thank you for your patience.
Woo, everybody's asking me.
When?
When?
I told you, as soon as we got this approval, uh, they expect that the interior alterations will take several months. Hopefully, early next year.
Okay.
Very good.
Ouch.
I have to go to river hat.
Okay, do we have motion for? Okay, do we have motion for approval?
Motion.
Motion by Gloria.
Second by, and all in favor. I oppose abstentions.
We have five yes. Thanks so much, Mr. Kennedy.
Enjoy the rest of your summer.
You too. Be safe. Claire, are you gonna jump in at one ninety-two? Item four, one ninety-two. We have a sign.
Yes, this is Peggy. Anyone introduce yourself? So we discussed this, I think, about a month ago.
Tell us your name for the record, if you could.
Peggy Kelly with Kelly's Expediting. This is seven eleven fifty Smithtown Avenue, Suite Five, in Runcockville, New York.
Thank you.
This is seven eleven, and at one ninety-two West Bonn Walk Highway in Hampton Bays. This is immediately east of Sock and Shop entrance in the, in the McDonald's. And there was some discussion about the freestanding sign, and the board said, a couple board members said they liked this one better, which is in the Village of West Hampton Beach.
So, interestingly, I drove past, there's a brand-new seven eleven. Within the last two years, on Station Road, just where you turn in to go to Home Depot to open like about two years ago, and they had the exact same sign.
Yes.
Which is actually very, much more, you know, very attractive.
That's the sign.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's the one they're proposing. So she, she worked hard and got corporate to say yes. Went to ARB, they agreed. And, so, I don't think any issues with this sign, which was the one on the building. So, we'll approve the one on the building, and this revised.
As one resolution.
One resolution. So I passed out a resolution. It doesn't have any findings in it, but it says the ARB approved it. So that the ZBA granted the variance for this, the local numbers.
Number of colors.
Colors, and the.
Does this need that variance? Or is this, still has four different colors, or is it?
We have four different colors on this. We would have liked the five, because we had to remove the orange from the seven in order to maintain the four colors, which are the white, green, red, and black. And the cabinet on this will be black instead of the brown that was proposed on the prior application. And the gooseneck lights on the wall sign will also be black instead of the brown color that was proposed originally. So.
And the on-building sign is not illuminated, like we were talking about the McDonald's.
It is exterior illumination with the goosenecks.
With the goosenecks, right, yeah, yeah, okay.
Right, exactly. And that's shown on the.
Okay, very good. Much better looking than the.
It should look good.
Thank you for.
George. Probably, just to let you know, the base will match the material that's on the bottom of the building. It's gonna be cultured stone that's on the bottom of the building. That will be what the base, we didn't put it on there, but we did make a note that the base will match the building. Okay, I'm just gonna make a note of that. Yeah, the base will match the building. Okay?
Okay, very good. Do we have a motion for approval? Motion by Gloria, and second by Kate, all in favor. I oppose abstentions. Five yes, two absent. Thanks so much for coming in.
Thank you.
Claire, do you have any other?
I did have that. I don't wanna cut in front of people, but.
Okay.
Area T, that's gonna tick off, okay?
What about the land to golf?
Land to golf.
Oh, yeah, that's to set, that's an easy one. That's to set the maintenance bonds for the amount of sixteen thousand five hundred dollars for the landscaping plan associated with the staff quarters.
Very good. Do we have a motion? Motion by George, second by Kate, all in favor. I oppose abstentions. Five yes, two absent.
I'm trying to keep my notes, my notes are in shambles because of the changes.
What are you in for, Dave?
Area T.
Area T, okay.
Is, I'm sorry, if it's Peter, I'm not quite sure who's, who's doing this. No, the, Vin Carrato, could we have him come in for McLean? That's what's.
A zoom? Putting him on now?
Great.
He's coming in now.
He's our traffic consultant on this.
This is item thirteen. It's on for SECR, Area T.
Yes. So, Area T, we are doing SECR for the zoning board appeals. There were some questions as we were reviewing the SECR about traffic, so they had a traffic report completed. And then we hired McLean Associates to review this. And we discussed this at a meeting pretty recently. I'm quite sure, June, maybe?
About three, three or four weeks.
Yeah, three or four weeks ago.
Yeah, I'm sorry, could you just repeat the applicant again, because I'm.
Area T? Area T?
Item thirteen.
Oh, 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 okay, I.
Item thirteen.
Yeah, for thirteen?
Yep.
That's great. So, the applicant had provided the information, McLean had provided a, a report that we went through that day in June, yeah, it was back in June. And then they were gonna come back with some traffic information, right, for accidents?
Accident analysis in the area, which, which we've done. We have a report from our consultant that went to LKMA.
Right.
We're all on board.
Right, so Vin is here. So I, you wanna outline that, Vin? Do you wanna introduce yourself too?
Sure, Vin Carrato from LKMA, four thirty-seven South Country Road in Brookhaven. Like Claire said, we had, we had reviewed the initial traffic study, and we had made some comments, which were addressed by the applicant's engineer. The only outstanding issue was, we were concerned that about potential crashes along, there was no crash analysis provided in the, in the original report. So we asked the applicant to investigate crashes along that stretch of Montauk Highway. They looked at about, about a quarter of a mile in total along there, and did an analysis of crashes over the last three years that have taken place there, and that there is no evidence that people are forcing their way into the stream of traffic and causing left-turn crashes or right-angle crashes. So they, what they had provided essentially, effectively addressed the only real traffic safety comment we had. There were some other minor site plan things that we've made recommendations for. We did not receive an updated site plan, so I don't know if any of them were looked at. But I repeated them in the brief memo that I provided to Claire today. None of which really present any safety issue, just some things, some things based on preference of myself. And the search, truck circulation, potential truck circulation really is a, it's, it's a site plan issue for the, for the town, that the town might wanna resolve. I don't know if the applicant has provided any of the information on the site plan comments that we made.
Oh, what I was thinking with related to this, because we're at the stage of SECR, environmental review, we're not site plan yet, is that we'd have it part of his comments, which are located on page two. He's got two sets of comments, one, one and two, and then one through five, which seem to be site plan-related, with bike racks and things like that. I'd incorporate these exactly into your part three for the SECR, and they would have them as conditions to make sure that we're addressing them during the site plan review. Does that sound fair, Vin?
Yeah, it does. And again, as was on previous applications, subject to SEDPW approval of the access to the, to the county highway.
Oh, okay. Yeah, that makes sense. I'll put, make sure that's clear in there.
Yeah. We, we had asked for sidewalk along the side frontage. That's county's discretion.
Right.
And I think we were asking to explore the idea of a center turn lane? Did we have discussion of that?
We did look at it. We was kind of, it was, it was really in the context of potential delays on the, on the roadway, Tom. And again, we don't see the need for it, but if the county wants to explore it in the future, it would be an improvement to the county highway. We did say in our comment in our original study that the county might consider a dedication for future widening to provide the turn lane.
Okay.
Okay, good. Claire, did you have any prepared, prepared, or?
I do.
Okay.
I do. I have my documents prepared. Pass that out. This is the part two. So I just quickly checked, changed the checks on this document. So I'll update them to have the state. I did update the part three, which is attached.
And you're gonna incorporate all those?
Yeah, so I said small to moderate for everything, and under traffic, you can see I said add the language.
Okay.
I'll include two, one through five, and I'm gonna make a new six to make sure this health depart, I'm sorry, county, county approval, the DPW approval. So I'll add that. Otherwise, this is ready to be adopted as a neg deck, and then we'll give it back to the other involved agencies.
Right. Scott Martin, is there anything?
Sounds good to me.
Okay. Okay, so then our first action then is to, I guess our action then is to adopt a negative declaration as amended by Claire and the staff report to be motioned. Motion by Tom, second by George, all in favor. I oppose abstentions, five yes, two absent. That's the neg deck. That's the only action.
That's the only action today. It's going back to the zoning board, yes.
Are we gonna deem complete, or for?
No, it's been, it's either deemed incomplete right now, or we don't have an application to act on yet.
We don't have an application, okay.
The application's a site plan application, but it's what we need to do to do the SECR process. We took lead agencies.
Okay.
So we go back to the zoning board. Go through that process and then go back for site plan.
Gotcha.
Okay.
Gotcha. Okay. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Thanks, Vinnie.
Oh, you're welcome. Thanks again for letting me jump to line.
I don't see Anthony here. Claire?
Do you want me to wait for mine? I think mine are like cleanup items at the end, so.
Seth is here, Prene is here.
Here with an applicant.
Where's applicants here? Let's go back into the agenda. What's that?
Do we need Anthony for that?
Oh, yeah, we need Anthony for that. Let me just work through our agenda. Seth, you're on Verizon. Are you ready to go with Verizon?
Yes, I have. We are going to be signing the plans today, but we found a little clerical error where I had to note, I had to put a condition of it being white upon waiting for a tree color. I just used it as a placeholder, but we didn't get, I needed to get rid of white in the conditional approval. So I had put together a resolution stating that it would be changed to a non-reflective color, such as gray, silver, or light blue as the condition. And furthermore, we'll add, that they will have to file a notarized affidavit stating that not only is the May twenty-second, twenty twenty-five conditions need to be followed, but this, these amended conditions as well.
Is this in the village property? This isn't the one in the village.
Sixteen sixty-five is Sag Harbor Turnpike before the train tracks going in the.
It's actually the Verizon building.
Right.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
Opposite the recycling.
Yeah.
So this is just a clerical catch.
Clarification.
Okay. Good. Do we have a motion? Motion by Kate, second by Gloria, all in favor. I oppose abstentions, five yes, two absent. Anthony, perfect timing.
Thank you.
Thanks, Seth. What's that?
Did you hear my position up there? I didn't hear.
I'm waiting for Dave, so.
Oh, okay. Seth, do you wanna keep going?
I'll keep going.
Sim, it's item ten. Item ten. We're just doing an order until we get.
Yeah, yeah. No, number ten, I'm sorry, yeah. Number ten is eleven Fox Hollow, right, Sim Realty.
Yep.
Okay.
That's a covenant amendment, right?
This is a covenant amendment. Let me hand out.
It's one of those standard.
Yeah, it's fairly standard. This one came in just recently. It was, let me hand it out first off. There we have it. Yes, so eleven Fox Hollow is lot twenty-five in the Sim Realty subdivision from nineteen eighty-six. That's a thirty-seven lot subdivision. The covenant, covenants on those lots were allowed twenty percent allowance for clearing. In this case, a thirty-five percent would be applicable per APOD. The, the current lot clearing on this site is thirty-one percent, so we don't have an over-clearing situation. It's twenty-five thousand five hundred and eighty-three square feet of the eighty-two thousand two hundred and twenty-six square foot property. I should note that there is a fifty-foot non-disturbance easement on the, on the property, which has, has not been violated either. In looking at the Sim Realty subdivision, this would be the fifth covenant amendment that would be permitted, two of which did have, had over-cleared past the thirty-five percent. Those two did do a subsequent revegetation. That is not the case on this one. Thirty-one percent is still compliant with APOD.
Right.
So I would suggest that, following the other lots, thirty-six, twenty-two, four, and ten, lot twenty-five would be.
These are a little difficult, because, you know, we just had one come in, and we had a long discussion about it, that, you know, people are purchasing the lots knowing that they have a restriction, and the whole subdivision purchased into the property with those covenants as well. And, you know, then the covenant's not holding up. What does that say for the rights of the other neighbors who purchased in with that restriction maybe in mind?
Well, these, there were a number of maps that came in where, this was during that transition period where they were imposing, they were drafting the APOD regs, and what was happening is they were slapping covenants on these maps, some more restrictive. But what happened was, when the APOD regs came in, the intent is now to bring all these lots up to code.
So what's the timeline for this one? When was the subdivision?
Eighty-four was APOD in April of eighty-four, and this was eighty-six. But that is the timeframe where these things were being discussed.
Yeah.
They had put on not only the, these clearing restrictions, but a fifty-foot buffer, which is a sizable buffer.
Remember, the APOD, when APOD went in, it, it was two phases. The first phase was on tracts, and then the second phase was on lots, and that's what's capturing these. We have a number of these in Quogue, bunch of them, Northside Hill, and those in New York area. So as we get them in one by one, you know, we bring them to compliance with the APOD.
Yeah, I would just suggest that APOD is, I believe, a good restriction. It is an appropriate amount of clearing. So twenty percent does, I guess it's to each his own, but if they knew about the twenty percent, they are granted by town code some, the less restrictive of the, of the rules, which has been done on five times.
For me, it doesn't settle well, because if, when somebody purchases the property, they see those covenants. They have full awareness of that when they're purchasing in, and then, you know, it undermines a lot of the things that we're looking at.
The, the covenants are in, in conflict with our, our code.
I understand, but what if somebody purchased their lot thinking, oh, there's covenants on all these lots for only twenty percent clearing? That's the lifestyle I wanna live, and then we're undercutting that, right?
They probably buy it with the understanding that covenants can be amended, and probably would, would understand that the intent of our board over the years has been to bring it up to the APOD standard.
So is there a way to find out what the feeling of the neighborhood is, so that we're fair?
How many we've done in this, I don't.
This would be the fifth. There's thirty-seven lots in this particular subdivision. We had them in twenty, two thousand seven, twenty twelve, twenty ten, twenty seventeen was the, the last one. But, yeah.
I'm sure we'll get more.
And these are, these are the only ones that, who have discovered they've over-cleared. There's likely.
Yeah.
Who, who have over-cleared and probably.
Yeah, they come up as they want to build out a larger accessory. They, they see that they are actually in violation of their, the covenant, and that there is, you are entitled to the less restrictive town code. At any rate, they have been granted before, so it was, of course, it's your discretion.
Yeah, but it would be, it would be counter, counterproductive if others have already gotten it for us to.
Right, yeah.
So that's.
Thank you for the context on the APOD timing, because that settles better.
It's a wacky, it was a wacky area of.
I have a lot of history in my brain, but I didn't have that one. Okay.
Say at the end, the fifty-foot buffer does still stand, so.
Okay.
Just to add, there's a handful of those subdivisions that happened after, that got restrictive clearing. That's worse than the, or more restrictive. There's one that they restricted it to eleven thousand square feet after nineteen eighty-nine.
Oh, really? Oh, okay.
They went, so they, so, you know.
That's a different ball of wax.
Different ball of wax.
Yeah. There might have been some natural features they were trying to protect, so.
But we don't have the answer to that here, right? Like, so on the covenant language, what was the intent?
It was non-disturbance in every, I mean, it was well-descripted. It was, do not burn your garbage in there, do not, no topsoil over two inches to be removed or put on top. do not, no topsoil over two inches to be removed or put on top.
What was the intent?
That's the, the non-disturbance area, no, it was just, do not disturb more than twenty percent. I mean, I go through the covenant, it was your common language on, you're allowed twenty percent, and the rest is to remain.
But there wasn't an intent linked to it typically?
Not that I could discern, I think it was a sign of the times.
Yeah, they were trying to do what we ultimately achieved through our code amendment.
Or groundwater.
Yeah.
Aqua for protection.
Yep, aqua for protection, exactly, exactly, there was a lot of study and science went into these regs.
It is useful to read the covenant, so you can see what the intent was, right? Because I understand there's a close linkage, what you're saying, typically, that language is in the covenant, so that we know exactly what they were thinking.
Yeah, I mean, as I say, they, this was done right as the regs were being formulated and drafted, and it was.
As Christine mentioned, a public hearing is always an option.
So then you would know if the neighbors had an issue about it.
It's useful, I think, if that's an option, because I think a lot of these, you know, we want to be able to consider and have people be able to use their properties in the way that they want to, within context of the laws, and, you know, maybe there was one happened with chicken or egg, so I think it would be a good policy for us if there are covenant amendments, that we do have a public hearing, so that we can just understand what the neighborhood thinks.
That's our option?
Yeah.
So maybe that's a good policy, so why don't, why don't we go?
I would, I would ask for us to do that in this case, and then we can consider what to do going forward with these.
Kristen, do we know what our next hearing date on this would be, be August twenty-eighth, or? So our action then is to set the public hearing with the covenant amendment on Sim Realty Lot Twenty-Five for August twenty-eighth, and that's motion by.
Thank you.
Kate, and second by Tom, all in favor, I oppose abstentions, we have five yes.
We'll make it happen.
Good. Then we can act the following, you know, depending on the show. Anthony?
Sorry, I'll bring him back on if you want, sorry.
I think it was the applicant. That's Will Shapiro, I think, is Will Shapiro the applicant?
On this one?
Do you want to just, we just put the closing camera?
You want me to bring him back on?
Does he wish to be heard, or? I didn't know someone. If he's still available, we could take his comment.
I'm bringing him back on now.
Great.
Thank you.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, can state your name, please?
Yes, William Shapiro, I'm the attorney for the homeowners and the applicant on this. So, does the board want me to send out notice to the neighbors on this before the next hearing, or?
Will, it's gonna be like any other public hearing, we're gonna get everything ready, and you'll get a phone call, we'll give you the mailing list and the poster.
You gotta post a sign and we'll walk you through it.
Okay, thank you, that, that's it, and if any of the neighbors have any comments or objections, I'll be happy to field them.
Great, great.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Shapiro.
You're welcome, have a great day.
You too. Anthony, are we, did you want to?
Want to go back then?
Yeah, we might as well jump back in the, well, actually.
I think they're in Goodwin, so.
Yeah, no, we have Hampton's Collective, right?
What's, who, what are you doing?
I thought you were going back in order. Oh, Hampton's Collective, I'm sorry, yeah.
Clearing, so it was unconstitutional, so there was a period of time that they, that the planning board was putting the clearing restrictions on in anticipation of that.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, sorry, no, I was supposed to keep.
You were there and I was around.
I wasn't, I wasn't there for ten years, I just heard about it.
I, I was actually there, I was actually doing private work on my own.
Twenty-five other homeowners, you didn't say, I want that.
Sure, then that's fine, that's, that's the asked, asked question, asked and answered, right? But the question has been asked and there's no answer yet.
Board here, so this is the Hamptons Collective, this is another cannabis retailer, this is two fifty-seven, County Route Thirty-Nine, just to the east here of North Main Street. This is the Capri site next door, I believe.
The Garden Center.
Yep, and this is the Garden Center site.
Frankenback.
Yeah, Frankenback.
And also, a very attractive site, you can see from the front elevation here, landscaping looks good, everything's, everything's pretty nice. This is largely some site improvements, but mostly a change of use. So the first thing, the first document is the report there, there's a lot of similarities, so you know where the property is, you know what the application's for, so there'll be this building here, and then the storage building attached to it, and then the rest of the site will be used for the existing use. We had a public hearing on June twelfth, and it was closed with a ten-day written comment period. We did get comments in this case, they wanted to verify that the Hamptons Jiu-Jitsu does not constitute a community facility per the town code and the state for distances purposes. Parking from the adjacent Capri site is a problem, so they raised objections to having cross-access that would allow the parking problem to be exacerbated, and they want to maintain and enhance the buffer in the rear of the property. Let's see here, this is where it joins the residential districts. Actually, that's not completely true. It joins residential back here, this property sitting here is actually in the highway business district as well. I got nervous, because I thought I missed a transition setback. So you would measure the transition setbacks then from the residential. This was a type-two action under secret in this case, referral comments, we refer to the town engineer. On April seventh, he said he had no further, no further information was necessary. But we'll do a final review and a final sign-off from the engineer.
Anthony, out of curiosity, is the Jiu-Jitsu place does not qualify as a.
As a, a community center or something?
Or a, or a school?
No, 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 we, we got into this, into the weeds a little bit with some other applications. The Office of Cannabis Management, their regulations define very clearly.
Okay, I was just, for my own.
It's basically a gym, within the Hampton's Jiu-Jitsu is in the back, so if a, a gym, same thing is not, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I was just curious as to, I thought that was a good question.
Yeah, no, that did.
The community asked.
Yep, we, we've inquired. Office of Fire Prevention came back, didn't have any specific comments, they'll do another, you know, review at the time of building permit application. DPW hasn't come back, but their plans show, actually, their plans show bike racks on there, so my guess is, is they've already been to the DPW. Your plans also show some sidewalk work in there being redone in accordance with some DPW, so.
We've been to the DPW, they came back with a plan, but as it turns out, ninety percent of it was done already, I suspect, through the original.
That was the other side of it, as you looked, you could see.
Right, yeah.
Whole sidewalks there.
So, we have, we have very little work to do, but they're renewing that permit, I suspect that soon.
I'm assuming it was they who asked the bike racks, or did you willingly put them in?
I, I believe that was a vestige from that prior application.
Gotcha, okay. I'll make sure. Fire District came back and they did, by the way, no changes to the building at this time, so no ARB approval, other than the storage building, I should say. Fire District came back, they recommended sprinklers and equipped with Knox boxes. Highway Department said there were no recommendations at this time. The Planning Commission did come back, I graded out because I couldn't find it, but then I didn't realize the Planning Commission did a memo for three projects in the same, so they, they did provide comments, it's a matter for local determination, no surprises there.
Anthony, sorry again to interrupt, but on both these applications, sprinklers and Knox boxes, are they already there, or is that something that has to be added?
That's something that gets, we typically don't get involved in something like that, you know, so what happens is, they, they recommend, you know, they're recommending a sprinkler, what's gonna happen is, when they go in for a building permit application, they, that's when they start looking at the New York State Building Code requirements. That will dictate what has to be sprinkled, where exit lights have to go, so they put it in there, they put it in a recommendation for sprinklers, but that gets determined at the time of a building permit application, and it's based on certain conditions, three stories, I think automatically, it throws it into a sprinkle, I don't know all of them, Gloria.
I was just, I was just curious as to, this is the second time I've seen this.
Yeah.
Today.
Yeah, yeah, it, it, it does come in, so we just put them in there, that's their recommendation.
Thank you.
We'll work that out in the building department application. General standards, again, A, uses in harmony at the intent of the chapter, again, it's a special exception used subject to the standards for which the board reviews. Is the plot area sufficient, this property's over ninety thousand square feet, for which the improvements were subject to a site plan approval going back to two thousand and seven, includes the landscaped area in the back, so I think it's good. The pro use will not prevent the orderly and reasonable use of adjacent properties. If anything, what we're hearing about is spill over from the Capri here into this property, not vice versa. You know, I looked, there's some grade changes as improvements, we didn't get into cross-access with some of these site plans previously, so I didn't know if it was something we just want to.
Is there, is there a cross-access opportunity on the site?
I don't think so, because I think as you get towards, that's North Main, that you have the Karpinski property.
Yeah.
And that, that blocks it with.
There's a building right in the way there.
You know, the problem is, you know, back here, we have to have a transition back here, so nothing could go back here.
The other thing is, we didn't want to encourage the Capri parking, which has been a security issue for us for.
That sounds like a nuisance issue for the neighbors on that, that road.
Yeah.
It is, and they, for their part, they do have the fence that they have here trying to prevent a lot of spill over.
I mean, it would seem to me, the, the cross-access to North Main would make sense, because that gets you to a light to go east.
If you look at the improvements.
But it's problematic.
You know, it's one of, you know, on the other hand, you simply could put in a future cross-access.
That's what I was gonna suggest.
That's not established, not said, and it's contingent on a whole bunch of things, I mean, a lot of conditions have to happen.
We have the opportunity now, and if Capri ever changes use.
We're not gonna open it, we're not gonna send them anywhere, because they don't wanna go, but that's.
It's beneficial to have it, you know, at least we have access, we have, we have the opportunity to use it.
Be general for those.
Yeah.
It, you know, so long as, so long as there's a discussion at the time that you're asking for it, so we can talk about.
We're not asking that you put it in right now, we just have.
No, I mean, because a lot of things would have to happen to make it work, you know, the idea is that you want to get people to the controlled intersection, so if that doesn't happen smoothly.
Of course.
You know, so, so I think you, you would be okay, Dave, I think we would just be a future, so I think we'll, we'll add that to the resolution.
Discussion about it before you ask for it, because generally, you ask for it, we have to give it.
Right.
Right, but.
But if this.
It's problematic at the moment, but maybe that property might change.
But it's, involves a legal instrument to be recorded on this.
It does, so I, I mean, I think if, if you were asked to have a work session or whatever venue works for the board to, to further discuss where the, where the property's at, vis a vis the uses on either side. We're happy, you know, happy to come back and talk about it.
If and when determined to be feasible, or something like that.
If it makes sense.
Right.
I think that's fair.
I'm sure.
I don't know how we word that, right?
Crafting that one.
Well, are we asking for a commitment to a future cross-access based on discussion, or, you know?
Well, I mean, we've, we've done future cross-access covenants, for example, it's restrictive covenant or something, a legal instrument that simply says that a potential future cross-access will be contemplated with the property to the east, to the west, at the planning board's discretion, and based on, you know.
Circumstances.
Circumstances that would warrant it.
Compatibility with.
It wouldn't put them on the hook.
Right.
To open up a cross-access right now, but.
I mean, yeah, I mean, that's happening on the western end of Thirty-Nine now, where we have had agreements since the mid-two thousands, and now they're getting.
I mean, admittedly, right now, I couldn't get anybody anywhere based on the site.
We do it subject to a future discussion, the cross-access.
I think that's what the general, the general cross-access is that, right? It's like, well, we need to talk about it.
I think we, we, we as an applicant or property owner say, we're giving you the right, and it's the planning board and their sole discretion can enact it here, what I'd like to do is soften that so that the future owners or the future people dealing with this have, can come to the board and.
You can say future cross-access, you agree to future cross-access pending a work session with the planning board, should the other property owner come into the site.
Well, that's the other side of it, is, is I don't have anything on these properties, so, you know, so I got, there's, there's a lot of things that have to happen.
They'd love to be able to access our, our parking.
I, I could put in the wording.
Subject to a future work session.
Okay, so that was C. Again, this one is subject to, so they do somewhat show it on the plan, just, they should denote the hundred-foot transitional setback on here, and noted as a transitional buffer, that's, that's what we're going to.
We sort of noted it as three hundred, so.
You did, you showed the closest point of the cannabis facility, but you're only required to do a hundred feet in the buffer, so. Is the site suitable, again, it's, it's zoned HB and of the two zoning districts, the town determined appropriate. Again, we got a radius map, doesn't show that it's near any schools, theaters, recreational areas, a public assembly. F talks about the non-nuance industry and the definitions of the code, again, we don't have a definition, but we do have different regulations for the two, so we review one of those regulations. Access facilities are existing, again, I believe this is shown right turnout only.
Correct.
And then there'll be no left turns from here as well?
Excuse me.
If that makes sense.
What was the, I don't remember, because if I remember correctly.
Yeah, you can't make a left turn.
You really can't, I mean, it's almost, it's self-regulating, you almost can't. But, but we'll put it in, we've been doing it as a matter of practice.
There is a turning lane there.
That's, that's the incentive to get the cross-access going.
Doesn't the site plan show, we talked about this at the earlier meeting, when your, your traffic guy was here.
This one says no right turn, the one on the east side seems to be the open to.
I think, I think the east side was in, in and out, the right side was out only, right turn.
This is out only, yeah. But this is a two-way, but, and they're, they're, they're reducing the.
There was no restriction on the eastern one, I don't believe.
You don't recall that? Do you think there should be?
We've been restricting it on all the other County Road Thirty-Nine projects, no left turn. Signal there, it's a little different, right?
You do have an opportunity to get across.
You know best, huh?
That's, and again, we don't, right now, we don't have, I think they looked at the accidents, but I don't remember.
Yeah, I don't think it was significant here because of the light and.
The light does give some opportunity to.
To get out.
Break, yeah. Breaking the traffic.
It's just that, because it's two lanes there, if one person stops closer to the center line, and then the person, is it one or two?
I think there may be a turning.
Two eastbound, one westbound.
One westbound, okay.
And there is a center turn lane.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Well, when we get to the resolution, we could resurrect the issue, see if we come up with a new solution. Again, I highlighted the cross-access, I think we have the wording now that we'll, we'll put something in place subject to a discussion with the planning board. H, they'll secure the curb cut, which looks like they're well in the process with the DPW. The parking requirement is being met, and quite frankly, we have a lot, you know, we can get some land bank parking if we really needed it back there, but this parking lot's usually pretty open. So you have thirty parking spaces required, thirty-three provided adequate buffers. So they actually have an approved landscaping here. The landscaping's actually, looks really good back there for the approved plan. They do have a landscaping plan that shows some more evergreen-like hedge, like towards the back. My resolution does just say augmented a little bit more, you know, in, in, away from the property line, just to really fill it in from the adjacent property.
Can I ask a quick question? What's the blue lines at the back of those?
So I.
Is that a cross-access?
I don't want to go down this path, to be quite honest, because these are shown on this map as vegetated buffers.
Oh, is that what it is?
So, as you could see, I was hoping it was a cross-access.
That's what I thought, that's why I asked.
It's not. It's, it's their buffers and.
They're not, they're, they're being buffered by cars.
Yes, so anyway, that's why they want to go there, but, so yeah, that's.
I thought it was like a cross-access easement. Future route or something like that, you know, but.
K, collection disposal stormwater. Again, everything, Tom didn't have any further comments. Everything's existing. The drainage is really good on this property. No outdoor sales block rental equipment. I had to differentiate on this one, because we have another use on this property. So I just, I want to note that the proposed project does not include any cannabis-related outdoor sales lot. There's outdoor sales there, so I just want to be. And M talks about the specific standards, which we'll go through quickly now. Again, A, B, and C are the separation distances from schools, churches, and everything. They gave a radius map. There's, there's nothing over here. So they're okay there. D is the hundred, is the thousand-foot radius from other cannabis facilities. They have proximity protection from the state. E is about the traffic impact analysis, which they did do on this one. We got it from Dunn Engineering, it's February twenty-twenty-five. Again, none of them are really showing major, you know, buildup of traffic and huge numbers of cars. Ultimately, I think initially when these places open, they will be, but they will whittle down. So there's some of the things we could do. No left turns in the County Route thirty-nine. They're gonna secure the curb cut permit from the DPW. They're reducing the size of the easternmost access point, so that's good. It's pretty wide over there. The bike racks are provided, and we'll put in some language for the future cross-access, so we could address that. The parcels are sufficient size. Again, it was, has a full site plan approval. It's over ninety thousand square feet and the buildings are existing. G is about the transitional setback. This one is subject to a transitional setback, which we noted. So they'll, they'll note on the plan and show it as a vegetated buffer, which is mostly vegetated now. You know, is the, there's no changes to the building. Actually, it's a very attractive site, so I think it's, it looks really nice there. So I think it's in character with the community, nothing new. Parking requirements have been met. There's gonna be a prohibition of any outdoor speakers, music, and public address systems. The pedestrian circulation plan. Again, this, this, they're working with the DPW. We have sidewalks here. And so anything else that they could possibly do with, with that will be incorporated. I think it's good. Drive-through windows are prohibited. M are all the signage requirements, which we incorporate to all of our resolutions, and it'll be subject to the board's review and approval. And they'll have to secure and submit all the necessary licenses. State and locals licenses and red truffles. The security system requirements, so they'll have to give the detailed security plan, which includes, of course, cameras, lighting, and, and all that stuff. They do show a lighting plan here, so I will go through the few, the few items on this. And again, the applicant should take whatever steps to discourage all people from hanging out. Ten to nine, the operate, for the retail hours, ten to nine for the delivery service. Let's see, and then the planning board shall incorporate all applicable fire and martial requirements into the final approval. The lighting plan, so they do have a lighting plan, so they need to bring that Kelvin down to twenty-seven hundred. Reduce the illumination levels. There's a few, Dave, that are creeping over the property line a little bit. It doesn't concern me so much when it creeps over a little bit on the road, you know, it's, it's the adjacent property. So they could very easily fix the lighting plan to address that. Ten-foot mounting height, and then the downward projection for all lighting. The landscaping, existing buffers and landscaping for the two thousand and seven approved plan. Additional landscaping to augment the existing vegetation would meet a condition of approval, and it should be shown on the, as a transitional buffer on the final plan. Sinage must conform to the special acceptance standards to be reviewed by this board. Final engineering approval. The site plan indicates dumpster enclosure area, so just provide the fencing and screening details. New septic system is not required for this project. The mechanical shall be, or new mechanical shall be screened. And sustainability elements, that's that you include, including two EV charging stations.
I just had a quick, two questions. One, it's gravel right now, right? And it's planned to stay gravel?
Yes.
Okay, great. And then I don't remember correctly, we had another application come in where there was two uses within the proposed cannabis. How does that, what is the actual rule about the number of uses?
So, number of uses. Number, number of uses, there's nothing in the code specific about number of uses as it relates to cannabis. So whatever the number of use regulations are based on the size of the property in the HB zoning district, so you allow one use per twenty thousand square feet.
Okay.
Unless it's an office use, and then, you know, it changes. So number of uses is an issue here. And as in terms of the mix of uses, aside from the separation distances from, as required by the Office of Cannabis Management, and specific no residential uses can be mixed in with it, other uses are, are okay. And subject to whatever our zoning limitations are.
There are some limitations from the Office of Cannabis Management. You can't have an alcohol, you know, there are different types of uses.
A candy store with kids.
Another one that was trying to do, there was like a residential, like an apartment or something, was, and they were like.
Right, and I just couldn't recall exactly what it was, I was making sure.
No, I, I was just gonna say, I think on that, there was another application where they were gonna have two uses in the same building.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it was gonna be like.
Like a bakery and a.
Yeah, it was gonna be food, and that was, that was the question.
So maybe that was the.
That was the one.
But I think that's prohibited.
Behind the car veil?
Yes, yeah, the big one, the barn. Anthony, you have a resolution for us also? Do you want to just take us to the conditions?
Yep, so the first page, the resolve adopts the staff report July twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-five, is amended for our discussion, and approves a special exception application of the Hampton's Collective to convert twenty-six hundred square feet of existing retail space into a cannabis dispensary, subject to a number of conditions. A, the submission of the safety management plan. Again, this language all comes from the Office of Mechanicist Management and our code, so I disobey them. B, security and code compliant lighting and safety provisions. Exterior lighting shall be dark sky compliant. It does stay in here, so we do note that.
Should we keep in mind what the previous discussion about?
Yeah, we're gonna add the same language that we did before about security cameras.
Right.
So, we will add that in there. Right there, we talk about the security cameras and what they cover. D is about the signage and the requirements or the limitations, and again, it's subject to further planning board approval. E, the applicant shall take whatever steps to discourage objectionable behaviors on the site. Submit copies of all permits and licenses as applicable. On-site consumption of cannabis products is prohibited. No drive-through service, hours of operation for the retailer is ten to nine, and the hours of operation for delivery services shall be limited to ten to nine as well. And then the second resolve is the approval of the site plan special exception application. I listed all the plans here. Subject to a number of conditions. One, changes to the site plan. Whatever the engineer requires prior to signature of the final maps. I've heard the final requirements of the DPW. The two EV charging stations, the dumpster fencing and screening details. Note the hundred-foot transitional setback vegetated buffer in the rear. Add a no-left-turn signs at the access points on the thirty-nine. Changes to the lighting plan, bring the Kelvin down to twenty-seven hundred, reduce the illumination so that the foot candle is not spilling over on the adjacent properties. Show compliance with the mounting height of ten feet. Changes to the landscaping plan, provide additional plantings in the rear of the property in order to provide substantial buffer from adjoining residential properties. Native trees and shrubs. They do have some evergreen along the line there, so that's good. Final floor plan for both the retail building and storage building, signed and sealed by the licensed professional. General conditions of approval, all final maps, signed and sealed by the licensed design professional. Two EV charging stations shall be provided. All signage shall be subject to planning board review and approval. HVAC and mechanical equipment shall be screened. All lighting shall be dark sky compliant. The installation of dust-to-dawn fixtures is prohibited. No additional lighting on the property without planning board approval. All lighting should be shielded. And, let's see, freestanding security cameras, which are located within the parking lot, are not permitted. Submission of an affidavit indicating compliance with the site plan conditions. Obtain whatever approvals you need from the highway department and the DPW, and then arrange for a meeting with the town engineer prior to any construction. And then prior to, prior to signature, a town engineer approval, the filing of the affidavit, and submission of the final plan.
The only issue I'd like to raise is the two EV. I'm the person that's called. Anthony, they had the, was it Brown Buddha, had that discussion. I, I think we're in a similar position where there's no place for people to go as they're charging their cars and they have the product. They're gonna loiter on site and, and we don't have control of individuals who are in a car. We can't prevent it, but I think it, it encourages it and.
Employees, employees with electric vehicles.
Yeah, I mean, it, you know, I would be concerned. The employees we can control, but it's, it's people buying the product and then sitting in their car waiting for it to charge and then using it. You have, there's, you know, OCM has a loitering, loitering issue, and then you have it in your own resolutions.
The one of the day, strike the EVs. I'm gonna have to look at that with cannabis operators.
Because they're not altering the parking lot either, and it's advantageous to have the drainage, get the gravel, so. And next door, you have Hampton Jitney, right, where there's parking?
A couple doors over.
Pretty far down.
They're not abutting it.
Okay.
Anything else?
That's it.
That's it, okay. Do we have motion for approval?
So we're striking the EV requirements, right?
And that's a motion by Gloria. Second by George. All in favor? I oppose extensions five, yes.
Thank you.
I'll try to jump back in order, Anthony, is that okay? That brings Prina up.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Hey.
Actually, it'll be on a Friday.
It feels like a Friday.
I'm assuming it's David Goodman, hi.
Yes.
Yes, Goodman, okay. I have my draft, thanks. Mr. Goodman is.
Doing David Goodman?
David Goodman is on the phone, on Zoom.
I have large map here, but I have small maps included in this package. Do you mind if I just spread this out?
Give us your name.
Laurie, Gulf Church Land Planning Services, representing David Goodman. Nice to see you too, and David is on Zoom.
Great.
And would like to participate.
If we could bring in Mr. Goodman on Zoom, there he is. How are you, Mr. Goodman?
We've made a slight adjustment there. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
This is a pre-application report that was distributed at the last planning board meeting and we're on for action deadline today to adopt. It's a two-lot subdivision with a density incentive provision, so there's an alternative plan with a third lot. It's on the, Bridge Hampton Sag Harbor Turnpike, which is a county road, and it neighbors McKibbie's Deli. I don't know if you guys recall them. McKibbie's is just to the south.
Yeah.
McKibbie's Deli is just to the south of the property. It's right next door. The, there's a pre-existing home on, on the lot that dates back to eighteen seventy with a CO for a two-family residence. And the historic map shows the one acre, the, the back of the lot is this one acre portion. And it looks like it was previously merged with the, with the portion of the lot in the front. And there's a mix of residential in the neighborhood with a few commercial uses, as well as some accessory apartments. And the requested action is divide this portion into two lots, for two market rate lots with one affordable component in the front.
Maintaining multi-residents for affordable housing.
Both, both units are gonna be affordable on that, okay.
Yeah, hopefully it can be kept, but that'll all hinge on what the county says.
So they don't have to bring in any develop, they don't.
Yeah, they, they.
Train, development rights also.
We don't know what, what the county is gonna require, though, because of the.
The health department.
Because of the multi-residents.
Okay.
And we also need to find out what they, what they recognize as the density they have currently and what's gonna be required to offset.
Yeah, those are, those are sewage rights, so they're not development rights.
They, they will have to be within the same school district. I already spoke to David Wilcox about it.
Oh, do they?
And, and they're looking for the town to extinguish those rights to, to transfer them to the, to the property.
Okay.
Can we just? And I've met preliminarily with the health department. They do recognize this as two lots that were merged since, I can't remember, the year nineteen eighty-five.
So the density, I'm on page two, the density incentive provision plan is a three-lot subdivision. The affordable lot would be undersized at thirteen thousand, a little over thirteen thousand square feet. And they're transferring their rights as, as we discussed. This would qualify as a minor subdivision review. The standard plan, which is a two-lot, conforms with zoning. However, the density incentive wouldn't because of the undersized lot in the front. And there's two ten-foot-wide flag strips to the rear lots where there would be twenty, so they need. Yeah, well, with the density incentive, the board has the ability to, A, increase the density and then set the dimensional regulations, so they wouldn't have to go to the.
Oh, okay, that's right. Go down to R fifteen, I think, dimension.
Oh, maybe, I don't know.
Yeah, I believe so. R ten or R fifteen?
They're in the ground, groundwater management zone five, which has a minimum lot of forty thousand square feet for the, for the county regulations. About the density, it's the credits. The project complies with the master plan as it utilizes the density incentive. It's a type-two action pursuant to SECR. It is located in an archaeological sensitive area. I wrote it up, you know, typically the board requires a phase-one, A, one-B. I don't know if you wanna limit it to the rear portion of the lot, since this has already been developed.
Yes, that would make sense.
No Long Island Workforce Housing Act, although they are opting for the density incentive. I did note that in general, the town supports supportable housing and additionally the parcel. It's located pretty close to the Bridge Hamptons Room Street, if you will. It's less than a half mile, and there are sidewalks on the west side of the turnpike that take you all the way down.
Yeah, yep.
There was a hearing held on June twelfth with no public comments.
Just a quick question. You skipped by the park requirements.
Oh, I did.
Yeah, I don't know what the fee is these days for park, for park requirement.
Uh, it's in the code. I'll have to look it up, but we can, we can.
Well, the three, three lots, but one is exempt, you have an existing house.
Well, one, yeah, because they have an existing, so the two market.
I, i, if there's three lots, one existing house, one affordable?
Existing would be the affordable.
Okay, so that's not subject to the, so it would be a twenty-five-hundred dollar thing?
Those one.
One for twenty-five hundred, yeah.
Oh, one, not two.
How many houses are on this process?
The two, two, they're creating two new market rate lots and you can.
Yeah, but he, he's saying that the affordable would have already.
You already got exempt.
Exempt, then you have one.
Then you have one.
And then you're just.
Charge for the one.
Okay, great, so I'll reword that to include just the one.
At twenty-five hundred.
Yeah.
Twenty-five hundred, one at twenty-five hundred.
Thank you.
Referral responses, the con board, they noted some large mature trees on the property and especially the London alarm north property line to locate it, because it's, it would be in the vicinity of the shared common driveway. They also know, or recommend a twenty-five-foot-wide deer corridor to the east connecting to their easements to the. to their easements to the, their easements on the northern property, and then further easements on the subdivision north of that, so they're hoping to connect that, all that together.
So we have a comment on that, if I can interject, okay. So the deer, concept of the deer corridor along the back of this parcel leads to the parking lot for the Baptist church on this side, and there is a wire fence that includes the entire twenty-five feet of what they're trying to create a buffer of, on someone else's property that we could do nothing about.
I've never heard of deer corridor, I've heard of trail corners.
Yeah, they, they put it in outside.
Okay, well, those, those are their comments.
And we'll talk about it a little more later, because there's also a scenic landscape buffer, that's, that's being proposed, so maybe that's where we can get something.
A deer could probably jump over that fence. Walk over that fence.
The, they're, they're also noting that proposed buffer, they just wanna make, they're recommending that it's achieved by the natural vegetation that's already there, rather than removing anything and planting anything in the miller.
Which would be a request of my client, that there's a lot of knotweed and things in here.
Knot.
Knotweed, very invasive species, they would like, you would like to keep it as a natural or indigenous buffer, native plants, so that you can take out invasives and plant something that is native and presentable.
Yes.
Will they present a plan here?
We could, if you want, want us to show a revegetation.
Yeah, we'd like to see that.
Sure, we can make that part of the.
Yeah, to make sure we're getting the right species in and such.
Yes. The county notes that they have an application, and it's currently incomplete, or wasn't complete at the time, and they list everything that's required, that they'll require. We made a referral to the DPW, given the county road, they will have to make an application for a work permit, the county is, is asking to remove the existing driveway and install an asphalt driveway, and to remove and relocate the hedges that are in front of the property, which are in the right of way. Don't miss, you get off your map, 181 Bridgehampton Sag Harbor. The town engineer had typical comments regarding the monuments and three-inch drainage, he also noted the hedge located in the right of way, any curb cuts would go to the DPW, and he's recommending extending the sidewalk. There is a, a small portion of sidewalk just in front of McKibie's Deli, it doesn't go south or nor.
It doesn't, I mean, for us, it doesn't make sense to do that, because it's, it's not a continuous sidewalk on this side of the street, there's a tiny little bit in front of McKibie's Deli, and then a tiny little bit up further north in front of a childcare center, but there's nothing the rest of the way, and across the street, there's a continuous sidewalk, north and south, that takes you straight into the village. So the sidewalk work doesn't really make sense. Can I comment on that?
Sure.
In many places, sidewalks have to be put in piecemeal now. The county did a major renovation when they put that sidewalk in on the west side, and I'm very familiar with that area, I live nearby. I would say that if we can get additional sidewalk put in on, and they made a decision to only do it on the west side, but you've got to cross the road to get to the other side.
Understood.
I would say that putting in sidewalk may be appropriate, so that you're getting closer to the church. There is, you know, you've got Williams, Arthur Williams, you know, to the north, you've got other things, I'm.
None of these, these are all developed properties.
Just gonna suggest that, that that may be appropriate to consider.
I, I think it's appropriate when you've got a lot of undeveloped lots that will come before the county or the town, and then you have each of them, but every one of these properties is developed.
It's not necessarily developed when they come in for redevelopment, like what you're doing today.
Well, subdivide, yeah, sure.
You know, or subdivide, whatever word you wanna use, those are when we have opportunities to put in sidewalk. Obviously, we're not making a decision right now, but.
No, no, I'm just speaking my client's wishes.
Giving you my wishes.
So, right to the north is the Seif property that we also represent, they are currently redeveloping the property, but it's not in front of the town for anything but building permits, so there will not be any sidewalk on that property. To continue up to the Arthur and Sons Restaurant, which used to be called Fresh, and we represented them as well, that was redeveloped by building permit, and there's no sidewalk in front of that either, and then it's a residence, which is not gonna be coming before this board or the county, so I don't see. And there's two more residences leading south before we get to the church.
Have a lot of commercial vehicles parking there to go to the deli, with them walking in the street, see it every day. So, again, we don't have to decide right now, I'm just saying that I would not dismiss it, sitting here today.
I just think it's a sidewalk to nowhere, unfortunately, because that sidewalk's not gonna get the commercial people into the deli, it just doesn't get them there.
Okay, well, we'll discuss it further.
I, I appreciate that.
And it's definitely a long, like a long-term, you know, the goal is to do it individually, just like they do on thirty-nine. Eventually, everybody comes in and you have a full sidewalk.
What's needed is a CAPPY or the municipal agencies to come in and undertake public improvements, instead of having it done piecemeal sidewalks to nowhere, and then they don't get maintained.
They did the west side of the road.
Yeah.
And they are, in fact, actually looking at doing significant improvements to County Road seventy-nine right now. That may include additional sidewalk over there, we'd have to double-check with them, but for example, they're looking at a traffic signal just north there at the narrow lane intersection, they're planning significant improvements along, and that maybe, we'll have to follow up to see where they are on.
Sure, and if they weren't gonna do a full, complete sidewalk on this side, perhaps they could consider crosswalks, you know, traffic calming in front of the deli and church, so that you can get across the street without the cars racing through.
They had some public hearings on it just about this time last year, and we may have to update where they are in their design phase, I don't remember all the details of what they talked about, but it may include sidewalks there, which would make this discussion not as important.
Correct.
And then Tom also noted the, Tom, the engineer, the proposed scenic buffer that it, actually he picked it on a plan, and a common driveway for all of the lots. Fire district didn't have any concerns, and the fire marshal had typical comments, the highway had said they were good, landscape, I mean, landmarks, note the age of the house, it's eighteen seventy, and they're a fan, and they're recommending the density incentive plan because it, it's an existing home.
And my client has mentioned looking into salvaging the lumber from the antique barn.
Oh, good, oh, yeah, they had a, a comment about possible mitigation to relocate and use that, wonderful. And no trail implications. The recommendations are, start on page, at the bottom of page four, I have it in here as the planning board prefers the density incentive provision. Shared common driveway for all the lots at the existing location along the north.
Would, would the two-family house that's staying, would that come under the, the town's purview of affordable housing?
There has been some mention of interest from Curtis Highsmith about the housing authority purchasing.
Okay. Because, yeah, we know it stays.
Yeah, of course, well, otherwise it would have to be done by covenant.
Yeah.
And be monitored by the town housing office.
Okay.
So one way or the other, it would remain.
Okay.
As part of that, Curtis, or someone goes in and appraises the home and the condition of the home, as you point out, it's eighteen seventy.
I had a meeting with Kara and Curtis, and for some reason Kara, right off the bat, came up with an amount, I, I don't know, based on the size of the lot and the fact that it's a two-family residence, I, I don't know, it was just over five hundred thousand dollars, and.
So, yeah, so we're ending up with two affordable, two market rate lots and an affordable home that's a hundred and fifty years old.
And it's multi-residence, it's two, two apartments.
Right, it's a hundred and fifty years old.
And it's walkable to the village, sidewalk across the street, shopping, public transportation.
I think that's all great.
Yeah.
I'm a little concerned, and that's why I asked about how they determine the value and what might be necessary to make that.
Have to renovate it anytime.
So you have other recommendations?
Yeah, let's see, noted the landmarks, I'll change number four for the, for the corridor and just, I'll remove that, and then with.
Submission of a, or, you know, if you couldn't do some work on that.
For the, for the. A native revege plan be submitted for the twenty-five feet on the church side.
On the church side, yeah, we're not gonna do the deer corridor.
The, the, the width of that, because that, that's not noted on the plan, so do you wanna do twenty-five, or do you wanna do more?
What, if we have twenty-five foot buffer, is that what?
The, the dimension is not proposed, that's what Tom wants.
You wanna limit the size of the building, and there's not too much height.
Correct.
Yeah, well, it wouldn't affect the setbacks.
Setback would be twenty-five.
Well, the setback would be from the property line, so it's not gonna affect the setback.
No, ownership or the setback, in fact, you just have a native vegetative.
Yeah.
Buffer in the setback.
Which is a benefit.
It was a, right.
Is that good?
Twenty-five foot.
That's acceptable, David, you have to make a decision on that.
Do you buffer on this?
I would lean in the direction of keeping the buffer consistent if, with, with the setback.
That's what it would be.
It would seem to me if we do that with native species, that would be perfectly reasonable for anybody, and I certainly would support it, because a lot of what's there right now wouldn't meet that qualification, and it would be a distinct improvement to the boundary.
Okay, so we'll delineate, just walk it, delineate.
Yeah.
To you, the applicant, tell us.
Park it with a split rail fence on the final map. The, number six, you know, the con board asked for the location of the Linden that might be interrupted or near the common driveway.
My client wants to keep that as well.
Okay, I'm, I'm also requesting that they include all of the wooded area, do you wanna impose locating or showing on the survey all existing trees of a certain diameter breast type?
Well, you know, the problem with that is that if, if you put that on as part of the approval, something happens, all this, then there's an inconsistency.
It's just to show it on the, on the final map, but it's.
Yeah, but I don't know, but I, I, I would say a general area, but if you start delineating specific trees, the hurricane comes, and now your client is in violation, where's the tree?
Well, no, we're gonna, we're gonna design the common driveway around the Linden tree.
Okay.
But if it falls over in a hurricane, there's nothing we can do about that.
So we'll just request the location of that tree.
Yeah.
On the, on the.
Just locate it.
Let's see, IA systems are requisite, I requested to show the existing sanitary system, although it might have to get replaced anyway. Phase one at one B for the rear portion, compliance with town engineer, we discussed the sidewalk already, so I'll remove number twelve for now, compliance with the fire prevention, I also asked the exact distance to the existing hydrant, show the area calculations for the flag lot sizes within without the strips. The final map, call, to call out the existing dwelling as it's described in the CO as a pre-existing home, rather than call that as an existing.
Yeah, one and a half story residence, sure.
Final application will have to include the Department of Health approval, and then they'll need to make an application with the DPW.
I'll agree to.
Okay. So our action then is to adopt the pre-application report for David Goodman, motion?
Motion.
Motion by Gloria, second by Kate, all in favor? I oppose extensions, five yes, two absent. Laurie, thank you, good seeing you again.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Goodman.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's yours.
Yes, thank you.
Anthony, are you doing Somerset, one and two?
I'll have to show the board, this should be very, very quick.
Oh, good.
You say that every time.
I know, that's true. But this is in the village of Sagaponic, so.
Oh, okay.
So, this is, these are two lots on Town Line Road, and actually, the corner of Hedges and Town Line, they're in the village of Sagaponic when the subdivision was done.
Thanks.
By the way, Wayne Bruin's representing them, he couldn't be here today. When the subdivision was done, the properties were in the town, there was a common driveway requirement for these two lots on the Town Line Road, property is now incorporated, you know, within the incorporated village, Wayne Bruin has requested a covenant amendment to eliminate the common driveway, so that this lot then would have access on Town Line, this lot would have access on Hedges. June eighteenth, the village of Sagaponic took an action on this, as successor to the planning board, or to the town of Southampton, already approved this covenant amendment. That being said, I spoke to Wayne Bruin, and he convinced me, because he's Wayne Bruin, that he needed to do this with the planning board as well, just to be on the safe side. So actually, I did put a little resolution together, I could just read it if you want to. Just as be resolved, the planning board authorizes the recording of an amended covenant on lots one and two of the subdivision map of Somerset, situate three fifty-seven Town Line Road and seven oh five Hedges Lane, subject to approval of the amended covenant by the town attorney's office, and recording of said amended covenant with the Suffolk County Clerk's Office, consistent with the village of Sagaponic's approval on June eighteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Very good, do we have motion?
Motion.
Motion by Gloria, second by George, all in favor? I oppose the extensions, five yes.
I'm leaning back so you can see.
Quick and easy, you were right, they were, how about Wilderness Trail, Anthony?
That's, that landlocked parcel that we've been dealing with, we're still working out how we're gonna get access, I know Carl's been working on it, so we're just gonna do an extension of the SEACRA action deadline until August twenty-eighth.
August twenty-eighth, do we have motion? Motion by Kate, second by Gloria, and all in favor?
I.
I oppose the extensions, five yes. And Anthony's, I think, you're.
What's this education?
Do I do that? I mean, are you, why don't you just say it three times?
Yeah, let's do that.
Which one?
It's, it is.
You're gonna leave, leave fifteen.
Nine eleven Flanders.
Nine elevens, the only.
Is that your only other application for you?
Yeah, they have Teresa Masons, but we could, we could do nine eleven Flanders.
You wanna do nine eleven, okay, nine eleven Flanders Road.
I have twenty-five on the agenda, how are you?
Uh, either, yes, that's fine, just identify yourself for the record.
Sure. I'll just explain to the board here, so, we know we've been dealing with this property for a long time now, okay, so.
That is the understatement of the century.
Sort of an understatement of the century, right? The last time we were looking at this, we were, we were, we were working there before the zoning board of appeals, you know, for some variances and for determination about accessory convenience store. There were a number of variances that required, there was a lot of back and forth with this board, at our last junction, we had put together a, a conditional negative declaration, we didn't adopt it, that sort of put together our idea of what, of a, a plan for this site would look like, that's, it's okay, and, and so the applicant, we hadn't heard back, the applicant had been working to, to get a new plan together, and that's what they're here to present to the board today with the idea, here's what we've done, basically everything that we asked for, so that we can then move towards a secret determination, meaning that they changed the plan completely, worked towards a negative declaration in the focus of this project, so I wanted them to present the changes to this board so you could see.
We have, we have an easel here, if you wanna, if you have some show and tell.
Can we just have a list of the, your team who's here, the names?
Good afternoon, all members of the board, I'm Keith Brown, on behalf of the applicant. Thank you for the opportunity to present the revised site plan to the board this afternoon in connection with the SEACRA review. With me here today is, as part of the application, is Mr. Nick Buscemi of High Point Engineering, project engineer. In the first row, on your left, is Jefferson Murfree, the project planning expert, to his left, immediate left, is Nick Tortorello, the project traffic safety ex-engineer and expert, and to my right is Mr. Andrew Sleepy, representing the owners, who I'd just like to say that they've owned the property since nineteen sixty-five, some sixty years. For the record, we last appeared before this board roughly a year ago, on July eleventh of twenty twenty-four, as part of the SEACRA review of the project. When the application was previously before the board, the project sought to redevelop the gasoline service station, which had been on the site for many decades, about forty years, and develop a new seven eleven convenience store at the property located at nine dash eleven Flanders Road in Riverside. Since we last met, the site plan has been revised to address several comments raised by the board and by the town planning department, and the new revised plan, I would say, would be a vast, vast improvement over the existing closed gas station condition that's, that's there now. Most notably, the abutting lot to the east, located at thirty-nine Flanders Road, will now be included in this application, as will be discussed more by the project experts. The revised plan now provides for gasoline service station use entirely on the highway business district side, which is right there on the west side, larger parcel, at nine eleven Flanders Road, where gasoline service stations, as you know, are specially permitted as special exceptions from the town ZBA. And now we've included the parcel to the right, which is zoned village business at thirty-nine Flanders Road, which importantly, is as of right, subject to site plan approval only like any other use. It should be noted that adding thirty-nine Flanders Road increases the total project area from approximately thirty-nine thousand square feet to fifty-six thousand square from approximately 39,000 square feet to 56,000 square feet. In addition to improving the overall plan and site circulation, many of the necessary variances that were with just the single parcel proposal go away. The prior version of the site plan has been almost, the variance has been almost completely eliminated, except for a few minor variances, which are primarily the result of the irregular lot configuration. For example, the site now has been designed to eliminate variance requests for the overall lot area, the need for front yard setback relief for the fueling canopy, side and rear yard setback relief for the convenience store. Under the new plan, variance relief requested for 911 Flanders Road are for only the parking stalls and the existing conditions related to lot frontage along Riverleigh Avenue and the distance to the Peconic River and the Goodwill Zion Church. By the way, those variances existed before with the prior gas station use. 39 Flanders Road has been designed to comply with all bulk requirements. That's the eastern lot. While the parking variance is still requested to allow for 29 stalls, where 36 stalls are required under the code, the number of parking stalls and parking demand was previously reviewed by the town's outside consultant, AKRF, and AKRF was satisfied that there would be adequate onsite parking. Importantly, it should be stressed that having the convenience store on a separate village business-owned lot eliminates the prior use variance requests that was associated with this prior version of the plan. That's huge, obviously. Finally, the application has undergone extensive secret review, particularly as it relates to the issue of traffic, which we know was of particular concern of the board. However, the town's traffic consultant, AKRF, reviewed the applicant's traffic impact statement and traffic studies, and by letter dated July 19th of last year, AKRF found that the applicant had addressed all traffic-related comments. But before the project experts discuss the revised plan, I would like to thank the board and the planning staff for their help and cooperation, and that the applicant has expended significant time and resources on this project, and went above and beyond to listen to your input and the community's input to arrive at the current plan. Including most recently revising the, resubmitting a new building elevations which provide for enhanced architectural style. As a convenience store and fueling canopy will both have a matching charcoal color shingled roof, and a convenience store will include columns and have cultured stone base to closely mimic the design that was recently built in a village of West Hampton Beach at that store, as well as incorporating a welcome to Riverside sign in the front lawn section of the property along the traffic circle. And we just heard that there was an application for signage that I think Peggy had here before you. And that also is incorporating some of the aspects of that West Hampton Beach design, which.
So you'd be using the same type of pedestal sign?
Yes.
Okay.
It's a free standing sign here. I think they need to change it.
I pull it out, so.
So it's a free standing, yeah, it's a, it needs to be adjusted a little bit.
Sure. So with that, I'd like to call our project engineer, Nick Buscemi of High Point Engineering, who will go through the revised site plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just a quick question. Are the two lots now owned and intended to be merged?
So it's a little bit of an issue because they're separately owned, so there will be an overall agreement that will govern both of the ownership. But in terms of the merger, we can't do that. Because once we do the merger, then we lose that, the zoning classification. So, so the plan is to keep them separate under one operating agreement for both owners. And that was important also for 711 as well.
But you, would that, would you then need ZB approval for like the convenience store being on a property line pretty much? How does that work?
No, actually, that portion of the application, Nick pulled up the elevations, but. The color, when you, when you see the lot in the east, actually, and Nick's gonna go through it right now, so. Nick, to answer your question, I don't believe there are any bulk requirements that relate to the eastern lot, right?
Now, VB, the zero, you can go, it's zero to 15 or 15 foot.
So you can actually build without variance, without relief.
That was a question.
And one issue that came up with the planning staff was the desire to pull the building off of Flanders Road. So the, the existing building that's there now is, is very close to the sidewalk. There was talk originally about whether or not we could use that building. It didn't, it wasn't workable. So, so we slid the building back, but I should also state that, and Nick, sorry if I'm stealing some of your thunder, but we're trying, we are maintaining all of the existing trees that are there now, and that was important for staff as well, for a variety of reasons. So they were all, all the trees that were contained on the survey, Nick spent a lot of time to depict them on that site plan, so the board could see them.
Probably gonna be some sort of effort with the building, I mean, Claire, to sort of have some sort of pedestrian access, do you think, from, as opposed to having pedestrians? Because there's quite a lot of pedestrian activity in there, rather than have people walk through the parking lot to access the store, maybe some sort of access just for pedestrians out to Flanders.
So there is, so maybe I'll go through my quick little spiel, and then maybe it will answer some of your questions, and then I'll, I'll answer all other questions.
He will definitely address that.
Yeah, definitely, 100%. So Keith did a really good job. So just quickly, the site's gonna be improved with the 3,010 square foot 711 convenience stores, as Keith mentioned, with 29 stalls, six multiproduct dispensers beneath the 4,950 square foot canopy. The site will be accessible by motorists via 35-foot wide full-access curb cut on Flanders Road. That's located plus or minus 242.4 feet away from the intersection, and a 35-foot wide right-in, right-out curb cut on Riverleigh Avenue. That's located 130.5 feet away from the intersections. Pedestrians will be able to access the site from both Riverleigh Avenue and Flanders Road via ADA-compliant sidewalk. In addition to the major improvements of the building canopy, dispensers, and parking areas, other improvements will include curbing, lighting, utilities, landscaping, drainage, and sanitary. Site is designed to provide ample, ample space for circulation with drive aisles at a minimum of 32 feet wide, and the location of the underground storage tanks will allow for the fuel delivery truck to enter the site and stage in an area that will not impact site circulation. As part of the design, landscaping was heavily considered, as we are within the Pine Barrens compatible growth area. As Keith mentioned, it is the intention to keep all, all existing trees on site. Additionally, we will be doubling the amount of landscaping on site from an existing 15% of the site, about 8,420 square feet, to now having 17,203 square feet, which is approximately 31% of the site area. Of that 17,203 square feet of landscaping, 34% of that, or 5,879 square feet, will be located on that corner of Riverleigh and Flanders. Plantings will vary across the site, including 28 arborvitae's, six new birch trees, 12 assorted shrubs, and four different species of over 40, of over 50 perennials. So I just kind of want to go back to your question regarding access we have.
Access from both, both streets.
Both streets. And that's at a requirement of DOT as well.
Yeah.
So it's there.
Or an enhancement.
Yes.
You don't have the original site plan, do you?
That was only on the, the original was just the.
Just on the, on the one lot.
Right. Okay, let me just. And I just have a couple of questions.
Yeah, the, the key was, you know, we're gonna have some activity, right, in and around the area. You know, we've got it over here, but we've shifted this access as far away from the traffic circles. And then that was really the gist of this. I mean, we know we're in a situation here. We could do what we could do, but it was, we really needed to get this access as far away, because we wanted as much of this activity away from the intersection. The curb cut is about 50 feet further away from the intersection, plus or minus, yeah.
One of our concerns early on was the proximity of the curb cut to, okay, good.
The intersection, understood.
You want to limit left turns on to?
It's gonna be up to DOT jurisdiction, but most likely, we're gonna lose left turns there, which we are understanding, and because you still do have.
It's almost the directly across the street from the McDonald's. McDonald's is just, just further to the east.
Is the, is the size of the 711 gotten bigger, or is there anything that would increase the traffic calculations?
I'll let the traffic engineer speak to all of that stuff, but it's de minimis in terms of, you know, we're talking maybe 50, 100 square feet, so nothing that would bump us into a new threshold.
One thing I could say is that I'm sure you, you might remember, we had a home plate design for the, the actual store. Now this is a more traditional store, so that's a vast improvement, too.
Anthony, do you have the other site plan?
Doesn't really, the play, this is so new, this is so different.
Well, I mean, Tom just said wanted to compare the size, right, so it's useful.
Comparison.
I'll say, I'll say.
It's roughly the same size. It's about.
One of West Hampton Beach, which is similar in this way, you have the canopy and billing, is very functional. And, and, you know, I've been in there myself many times. It's, it's quite, it's quite good for West Hampton.
Christine, are there many examples of properties that are owned separately but operate as one? And is there any like indemnification issue?
I'm assuming that you're a principal involved.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's really more for the taxi.
Thank you.
The thing, we're gonna examine it as one site plan. I think that's our, our handling on the secret also, just one site.
We have to.
Yeah, that was the original. Anthony, where are we in the secret story on this?
We're gonna move towards a secret determination. That's, you know, I'm gonna get the revised stuff submitted. Me revise my plan, you know, the secret forms that we have to go through. They were trying to move towards a negative declaration. When we initially were doing a POSDEC, then we were working towards a conditional NEGDEC. The conditional NEGDEC sort of prepared a map like that. Since they've come in with that map, that's what we'll use as our basis. My plan is to do it in the next meeting. I just gotta make sure, schedule, I just gotta make sure that my, I didn't mess up.
We'll have an EF.
We have one already, so it'll just be revised, yeah.
Candidly, the, the discussion goes at the next meeting.
Okay.
For the adoption of a NEGDEC.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we've been putting it off, and I've just been waiting for the revised plan.
That sounds great.
That's the plan up there.
Yeah, that was the original.
Nick wants to just roll through it. You could see the major changes, right? The whole place design and the bottom of the site where Anthony's cursor is, and then followed by the canopy was, was pushed closer towards the circle. So this allows all of the use of the site to, to move away from the traffic circle, you know, as much as, as possible. So you want to add that, Nick? Sorry.
No, I, I think he, you know, he nodded on the head. The issue with the home plate buildings, too, is they always appear bigger than they are, because you have so many sides, and it's just every time you look at it, there's, there's this large.
That's a great point.
But even with the, the location of the tanks to the canopy, you could see, if, if the truck was staged there, you would be blocking. I think what a big, big point here is you're, you're not blocking any circulation, albeit these guys are only onsite for 10, 15 minutes. Anytime you can avoid any traffic issues onsite, it's always preferable. So I think the site that we have here in front of you is definitely an improvement to, to what was being shown prior.
And if I may, just from a planning, I know this is not under the secret review, but from a planning perspective, you have two other gas stations on that site, which are subpar compared to this. I mean, one, one doesn't even have a bathroom. The other had a porta potty, you know, that was operating, because the bathrooms were inoperable. Just to remind everyone on the board, this new location will have a fully ADA-compliant store. That, that includes, so you will have someone in a wheelchair, won't be bumping into sheltering, and will be able to get to, you know, ADA-compliant bathrooms. It'll be two bathrooms, one, one male, one female.
That's great. I mean, we're really excited to get this properly developed, and, and it's certainly, you know, I commend your team.
Landscaping is gonna be a big addition.
It's been a long journey.
It was hard for us, too, because this is so much better.
It is. Definitely on our way going, and, and I think we're hearing from staff that we're gonna get this done for you at the next meeting, Anthony, if we could. We'll try to get this going for you.
Terrific.
So. Okay, anything else?
Thank you very much. We appreciate your time.
Sorry about the wait.
It has to be a couple longer than we thought. 31 at the Hampton base.
So Anthony, are we jumping back into?
We can go to the regular meeting.
Okay. I'm gonna hold off on the town board.
Yes, it is.
Yeah. That's 18 years. I think Seth. Did Seth, we'll hold off on the town, on the referral. Seth, did you want to jump in? Because you're next on the, I think you're next. All right. 16, Baywater.
Yeah, this is actually just getting.
Oh, sorry. After you send it back over here.
Baywater, Seawater, Wellwater.
Yep, we just need to reschedule that hearing for August 28th.
August 28th. That's item 16 at Baywater.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion? Motion by George, second by Tom, all in favor. Aye. Oppose abstentions, five yes, two absent. Thanks, Seth. What about Patricia Thompson?
Yep, so we'll move on to number 17. That's Rob Chery here to join us. So, yes, we have a minor subdivision named Patricia Thompson. This is the pre-application. This subdivision is located at 37 North Bishop. You went to PC Richards and continued south, that would be North Bishop. And this would be on the west side. So this is, like I said, R20, 60,581 square feet or 1.4 acres in Tuckerville. The proposed subdivision is a two-lot subdivision, equals, almost equal, 30,262 for a vacant area in the back, and, which would be a flag. And then the developed portion up front would be 30,320. Up front, you have a C of O for, for the home from 1988, for a single family dwelling and two sheds. This dwelling is also landmarked, so that would be something to consider down the road. At any rate, it is located in the ground, groundwater management zone number five, which requires a 40,000 square foot minimum. So we will have to cross that bridge for Pine Baron credits at some point.
It's to bring in sewage credit.
Yes, I spoke to them preliminarily there.
Anyway, I can tell you all about it. We're a completeness. I forget that sometimes. It is complete. I have the necessary information.
Public hearing scheduled for 8/26.
Yes.
8/28.
8/28. Oh, did I give the wrong? Thank you.
I believe that was a motion by Gloria to set that. We have a second by Tom, all in favor. Aye. Oppose abstentions. Five yes.
Dennis, just as a reminder, we were gonna keep Rob Feshetti there to do his quick walk-on.
Okay, which, it's a walk-on?
890 Scuttle Hole Road.
Which?
Rob Feshetti, right here.
What's the name of the applicant?
890 Scuttle Hole.
890 Scuttle Hole, right.
You'll remember right away. We did a pre-application. You could see here, we got a bunch of.
So we're good with this one, right?
Preserve land up here.
Oh, yeah.
It was all preserved, development rights, but nothing was ever memorialized through subdivision. As you know, the town sort of bought development rights, and then lots were sort of created. So we, we were looking at a subdivision of this to mimic, you know, how the tax maps. We did a pre-app report on this. Rob's still working through, as you can imagine. When these things happen, now you've got to try to work through health department and every other agency. So all that we're gonna do is we just want to do a extension and a waiver of the pre-application policy on this, which would then extend the pre-application report for 890 Scuttle Hole Road until August 26th, 2026.
What date was the hearing? The original hearing?
Well, we're gonna have a, it, it goes back three years, so we'll have a hearing at final.
Oh, hearing at final.
Yeah, we'll have a hearing at final, but this is just to renew the pre-app on it, so.
Did you say 8/26 or is it 8/28?
No, 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 it'll be August 26th, 2026.
Oh, it's not, it's, it's just an extension.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Kate, second by Gloria, and all in favor. Aye. Oppose abstentions. Five yes, two absent. That's 890 Scuttle Hole walk-on. Rob, thanks for your patience.
Thanks.
Shall we stay in order? Teresa, is Teresa here?
I'm Teresa today.
Oh, Teresa, okay.
You don't look anything like.
I'm sorry.
481 Brick Hill. You wanna stay, stay up front? We'll do 481 Brick Hill.
481 Brick Hill. Rob, is that you?
Rematch plan.
Seth, where are you taking us, 481? Oh, okay, great. Hi, how are you? Just a state, direct.
Remus Alexi.
Excuse me?
Remus Alexi, owner of 481 Brick Hill Road.
Okay.
Resolutions. Okay, so 481 Brick Hill Road is a described property in the CR200 area of Bridge Hampton. It's 40,096 square feet or 0.9 acres. The average clearing on that property is 50%. It had cleared to 87.2 while undertaking a brand-new home. You might have visually seen this one as a gigantic pile of sand in the very front yard that had kind of, it's a very hilly area of Brick Hill. Yeah, so some of us have seen that. At any rate, they had, they've come in and we have gone back and forth with a revegetation plan for, they needed to revegetate 14,903 square feet. They have come in with a revegetation plan that exceeds that amount, closer to 15,000. And, yeah, it's, I have reviewed it at length with Mr. Ramos and the homeowner, and Mahoney designed it. And at first, it was quite a landscape plan, but we have since tweaked it to mimic better the natural vegetation. I can show you, it's quite a lovely plan, I thought. So the trees would be primarily swamp white oak, which is now more available as a swap-out for the white oak. We also have.
Microphone.
Microphone. Am I hitting the microphone? I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Some of the shrubs that are incorporated are the New York fern, the cinnamon fern, and the hay-scented fern, as well as bayberry, holly, laurel, arrowwood. So it's a nice mixture. And they did maintain the grades, which was, which was one of the things. Yeah, as much as they could. And I was able to make sure that there's nothing man-made behind the natural vegetation. So it is a tight lot, it's, so it was hard to find all the area. And luckily, the trees up front, which seemed buried, I was worried if they would survive, they seem to be okay. And we got it in time.
It happens that sometimes it does, they don't die.
Yeah, well, we'll keep an eye out.
With energy, hopefully.
Well, I, I had some issues at my house and the trees did not die with sand being moved around.
So our action then is to approve the revegetation.
Revegetation.
481, very good. Do we have a motion? Motion by Gloria, second by Kate, all in favor, aye. Opposed abstentions, five yes, two absent. Thanks for coming in.
Sorry about the wait.
Yes.
You learn a lot.
Seth, oh, yeah, I did, oh.
Thanks for coming in.
I believe that's it for me, but stick around just in case.
Horizon?
We're going to jump.
Oh, that's just sign plants.
There, you've still got some stuff. Did you want to do 25 Sandy Hollow? Oh, Prina.
Yeah, is that okay? Can we go to 21 and 22?
Sure.
Just because it's different.
Just because.
Denise Maynard?
Yes.
Denise Maynard and.
No, there's a covenant amendment right after it.
Oh, okay.
I have a copy, yes.
Good to see you, however. How are you?
George, Tom.
Gang's here.
Hello.
Gang's all here.
Sorry.
The gang's not all here.
Like a reunion.
21.
This is 21, it's Denise Maynard, 240 Halsey. This is a two-and-a-half acre lot, it's a pre-app report on the two-lot subdivision in the R60 zoning, it's also an ag overlay and archeological sensitive. There are, there's a CO from 1991 that shows a single-family residence and then a two-story structure that's described as an apartment above a two-car garage and several accessory structures. The, the, the single-family home is the one that fronts that leg of the property, that fronts Halsey Lane, has access to this private road to the north called Morgan.
Morgan Hill, yeah.
So it has, there's a history. There's a history of two subdivisions and a lot line modification. There was a subdivision done in 1980, and then there was one in 1991, which further subdivided what was called Lot 1, or this portion of the lot in the property to the east of that. Part of the subdivision, that subdivision included covenants and restrictions that call for no further subdivision without a majority, plus one vote of the planning board. The, so it's a two-lot, their standard plan is a two-lot subdivision. The portion of land to the east would be 80,000 square feet or 81 and change, and the Lot 2 would be 25,000 square feet, and that would be an undersized, undersized lot. The board waived the cluster plan. I have a question of this being a minor review, given the, given the quantity of the relief required. There's something in the, in the code and the subdivision, or it's chapter of the code that calls out for everything has, they can't conflict with the provision of the master planner zoning unless it's considered a minor area relief. So the question becomes, is this considered minor?
Yeah, because the nature of the relief is more setback.
I would say this is going to be a minor subdivision.
Yeah.
There's lot area, I think, building.
It's lot area and some setbacks.
And lot width.
But if you look at the lot area, it's totally in line with the, see, not in the south and north, so that's why, I don't think it's a big.
No, yeah.
I think that was a previously merged lot on the historic map, it should.
This lot was merged previously, yes, yeah. I mean, it's one of those that's been in the family for two centuries, so it's hard to.
Both proposed lots are developed, right?
Yeah.
One is developed.
One has a primary home on it, the second has a residential apartment above a garage. So, yes, they are developed.
It's been expanded, it's sort of, it reads as a single-family residence when you're there.
And it's to stay in the family, it's to give it to relatives.
And residential development, is that because it was originally farmland or something? Was there some, or there's no requirement about that? Okay. PRDs, I thought they were limited.
Oh, you mean like a cluster?
Never mind.
So they will require a relief from the ZBA for both lots. I have a note in here.
Larger lot just setback relief for existing structures.
Right.
Is that just for the proposed lot one?
Yeah, the houses.
The, the larger lot only needs some setback relief for structures. The lot areas for the smaller.
Yeah, lot area and lot width.
Are you going to apply C of O for the garage as the primary structure there or keep it as an accessory?
That would probably become a primary.
That would become a primary.
Yeah.
Okay.
And there, so there may be a.
We would ask for a primary structure relief for that because it's going to be a new lot, so.
Right, but eventually.
It's going to be in, it's going to be in different ownership, so you can't benefit from the.
I'm just thinking they might, you might want to eventually build a larger house on that new lot and turn that into an accessory, the garage.
I think you could do that down the road.
Yeah.
There's no immediate plans for that.
Okay.
Like I said, the, the occupancy, the people who occupy this before and after are going to be the same.
Same, okay.
And the two developed lots adjacent to it are roughly that same 25,000 or 30,000 square feet?
Yes, and obviously the one to the south is less.
Right.
The smaller.
25,000 square foot. Want to copy the map? So type 1 action.
It is because it's in the ag overlay.
Yes, it's type 1.
I noted the, that the code states that with respect to creating undersized lots, that the ZBA, I suppose they can require credits, they have.
So they make you show that you've made an effort to get credits. Anthony deals with them quite often on those, when you ask for lot area relief. And that's how they govern whether or not they're going to input development credits in exchange for the lot area variance. It's, the standard is, did you make a good faith effort? Are they available? And then they consider that. But they are, you know, essentially they reset the zoning for the lot.
Right.
So whether or not this is, should have a development right brought onto it, it's really their purview.
Right.
Would the planning board support? I mean, you could, you could always just use this support as, again, it's to the ZBA once it gets to that point, or if the board would support a transfer of credits.
Well, we would leave it to the ZBA, I think, you know. I think if they transfer the credits, it would be, come in, they wouldn't need area relief, it'd be, that's the incentive.
You could do it that way.
Yeah.
You'd still need setback relief.
Yeah, you need setback relief, but you wouldn't need area variance.
It's a.
Right.
In my experience, this board has sort of left that to the ZBA.
We do, we do, yeah, that's correct.
20,000 square feet required for the county. The, the master plan, there's nothing in the comp plan or other specific to the subject property. With respect to the overlay district, it doesn't, the property doesn't present any significant opportunity for ag use. And I also note that the property contains class 1 soil. We already talked about SECR, archeological, I don't know if the board would want a, to see if A's, one, A1B, both, most of the lot is developed.
I don't think it's necessarily, it's both, both developed.
No, Long Island Workforce Housing, there would be one created lot, so a park fee, new parkland, there were, there was a hearing held on June 26 with no public comment. The referral responses from the ag advisor committee, they note the undersized lot, they had a question about open space, and they also note that the property is adjacent to preserved land. The con board noted the. Active houses and contains active purple martin, that's what they're encouraging, maintaining that.
Yeah, I don't, the purple, I just, that's fine, there's an active rack house servicing them along the, I guess, the westerly rail fence, and it knows that they aren't actually endangered species or that they're a secure migratory species. I don't know what this western tract should be maintained as a mode of field. You know what they're talking about?
I, I think it's that whole portion, they're, they're recommending a 40-foot-wide north-south treeless corridor, I guess, running alongside the west property line. I don't know if the board agrees with that, but I didn't put it in.
Because we put a bird rack there?
I guess.
I mean, it's not a naturally occurring nesting spot.
Well, they're, look, their comments are their comments, but.
I would, I would push back on including that, I don't think there's a real.
Yeah, these aren't conditions that we typically oppose.
In this case, you have expansive farmland that, you know, presumably those birds would use.
Yeah.
As an open area.
There's a birdhouse there.
There's a birdhouse there, so I feel like they're being penalized for having a bird.
Yeah, that's an interesting comment.
No comments from the health department, standard comments from the.
We've mentioned this, well, in the five for discussion.
Oh, okay, so maybe I'll.
So, could we remove that 40-foot wide?
It was a discussion point, so I'll just mention that. Town engineer, we just want to make sure all this electrical or utility services are depicted in separate lots. Nothing from the fire department. Typical comments from the fire marshal, including the recommendation of installing a fire hydrant. Town highway was good, and a landmark notes the age of the house and that it's part of the, it's listed as a town historic resource, but they're not concerned since they're not proposing the demolition of any of the existing structures. The recommendations start on page five. If the planning board is willing, a covenant amendment will be required prior to final in order for the subdivision to move forward. I could remove item number two based on a previous discussion regarding the transfer of credits since it's within the purview of the ZBA, and I just note that the relief will be required.
For one, I would just say, if I could, all, it says all earlier and other covenants shall be complied with and remain, that's fine. I would just note, to the extent not modified by this approval.
Other than to the extent modified?
To the extent not modified, unless modified by this approval.
Yeah, the ZBA would have to modify.
No, 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 I'm saying, if you could modify the existing covenants as part of your approval.
Oh, okay.
And that would make complying with the old covenants subject to that modification, that's all I'm saying.
Okay. Number five, that 40-foot corridor from the con board, I'll remove, we already discussed it. Archaeological required, compliance with the town engineer, final map showing the location of the utilities and sanitary system. All the electrical, proposed electrical be located underground, compliance with fire prevention. Both fire hydrants, both on Halsey and Morgan Hill. Clarify the discrepancy, it's really not a discrepancy, but the description on the map for the accessory, or the apartment versus the way it's described, which is a two-story residence.
Sure.
Along EAF, part one will be required for the final application so the board can conduct SECR, IA systems, and county approvals required to be able to proceed to the final act.
Any other wishes?
With all it.
Every good, so we have a motion to adopt the pre-app report? Tom? Second by George, all in favor, aye. Opposed abstentions, five yes, two absent. Thank you for coming in. Thank you.
Thanks, Carl.
Do you mind if I take that map back?
Yes, sure. Do you have any?
I have the application right after this.
Oh, okay.
Where I left it.
You got Noel Crest?
Yeah.
Noel Crest?
I know, I never updated it on the software.
Item 22.
Yeah, it's not.
Oh, that's yours, okay.
Let me read that again, I'm sorry. I don't know what I did with my. This is a covenant amendment request for 11 Collins Wood. This is a, it's in the Noel Crestwood subdivision that was created in 1986. The lot's in APOD. The covenants restrict clearing to 35%, where the APOD allows, or would allow 60%. The lot measures 18,000 square feet and it's currently and has been for a long time 100% disturbed. So they, they're also, they've also submitted a site disturbance application, which is very preliminary and based on, you know, what the covenant does. If the board is inclined, I've drafted some conditions. Also want to note that the owners, this is before you because the owner has an accessory dwelling in application with the building department, so they need to bring the property into conformity.
Do we have the revege plan also?
No, we don't have that yet. I mean, it's sort of, I guess, a little cart before the horse, so maybe we want to do revege plan first, or if you're inclined to do the covenant amendment, then we'll, we'll work alongside and do the, the site disturbance. But so far, they've only submitted the application with the fee. We have to work with them to get the revege plan going.
So I'm sorting my thoughts on covenant amendments here, where there's a subdivision that contains many lots and, you know, a few are wanting to come out of the conformance of the covenants, I think that it would be a good idea to have a public hearing so that the neighbors can voice their thoughts, and we did that in one other application.
Yeah, and I remember you referenced the ones that we discussed in Hampton Beach.
Hampton Beach.
They, they were not in the APOD, just to clarify that.
Right.
They, they were not in the APOD, just to, to clarify that, but, but still.
But, um, I think for me, the threshold is, um, someone purchased a property knowing about the covenant amendments, other peop, then didn't like it, other people purchased in, and maybe they really, that was of value for them. And so, we really need to evaluate that fairly, I think.
I think, I think there have been eleven, I don't know if they've been fully executed, but the board has seen, I think, eleven, uh, requests so far for, uh, covenant amendments.
Yeah, that would be like a policy change, if you wanna do that, I mean, you could, if you.
I would support that, in the case of multi-lot subdivisions, where the one that we just saw with Carl, there, you know, it's a smaller, um, shift, right?
Right, so, these are, these are covenants that are permitted to be amended pursuant to the official protection overlay district, because these covenants were put in prior to it being implemented. So, the plane was piecemealing, saying, oh, it's gonna be twenty-five percent here, and thirty-five percent here, where, uh, uh, you know, APOD came up to be fifty percent, or whatever the situation was. So, the code allows you to, you're allowed to do that without the public hearing, um, if the covenant says that, of course. But if you wanted to, in the future, now to do it, it would be a big policy change, you know, to do it, and if the board is in agreement, we could, but it would just be something where you, you'd say, from now on, I'm amending the covenant in the subdivision, I want a public hearing every time, right?
We'd need more discussion with the.
I think so, I think you would, it would be a big one.
Notification, instead of a public hearing, you could ask for a notification requirement and give.
Like just a written comment period or something.
You could, you could be saying, I'm willing to do this, and just be like, if you have any comments, you can notify the whole subdivision.
Yeah, looking at with, um, we're looking at the tree protection laws too, and even areas that don't currently have clearing restrictions, so here's one way to say, okay, well, we need the opinion of the people around. So, I would support that notification, but I'm also happy to, in this case, I'd motion that we schedule a public hearing, consistent with what we did before. In terms of a policy shift, maybe we wait until our two other members are available for that discussion.
The, um, the one Seth had before you earlier, you, uh, you moved for a, a public hearing.
Public hearing on that.
Yes, yeah, and that's a similar situation, where it's APODs less restrictive than the covenants, but.
Hmm, okay.
What's, what is interesting is this particular property is a hundred percent cleared.
Yeah.
So, I, that, that make, that raises question marks.
Yes, and I, I would say, it, it's.
We should be looking at a re-vege plan right now.
Right.
And, and they're also looking to, to build on the property.
Mm-hmm. They have, the, the structure is there for the ADU, um, I, I, I believe that they're looking to convert it to an accessory.
I was gonna ask you, it didn't seem, they're sort of looking to convert the garage or whatever they have into, maybe.
Yeah, that's, that's the structure there in the top, like, in the northeast of California.
Yeah, no, I agree, um, as I, as I was telling her, everyone I've done, they've been conforming.
Right.
And, and when I saw this one, and I'm like, oh, this is, this is not right, 'cause you're giving them something, and they're still not conforming, you know, they're, not on compliance, I should say, so.
So, we could just vote no on the covenant amendment.
What the site disturbance would be to bring it to sixty percent in, in.
What's, what's, what is the co, what is the covenant right now?
The covenant is for thirty, is it thirty or thirty-five, thirty-five percent, and the APOD for this size lot would allow for sixty percent.
Yeah, I mean, you're gonna give that to them, 'cause obviously, it's very restrictive laws, but it's, yeah, no, you could definitely do that, I mean.
Actually, no, at least notification or a hearing, and, and I guess, we do that, we would do that first, and then the site, a site disturbance, or revegetation plan, and then the covenant amendment, right? Did I understand that correctly? The question is, do we wanna do a hearing, do we wanna do a hearing?
Well, in this case, is it, well, if we didn't approve the covenant amendment, they would be hard-pressed to make up the difference, 'cause they've already overdeveloped the lot.
Yeah, it's a very tiny, restricted one.
They'd have to tear down the house.
Yeah, no, you'd probably learn about it.
Something.
Right.
Well, you could do the site, why don't you do the site disturbance, you know, go, now they've got it, because of.
But you could hear from the neighbors to say what's important to them, you know, front yard, or side, or, you know, where they would re-vegetate. Or, you know, a notification, I like that idea, because then you're not opening up so many public hearings for things that.
And the public hea, the, the public hearing doesn't, I mean, you open it, close it, and you don't have to act on a covenant amendment, 'cause it's, there's no timeframes with that. So, you could just have it until you do the site disturbance, and they tell you, oh, I'm gonna do that this fall, I'm gonna plant this fall, or whatever you do, and then get a covenant amendment. Yeah, could do that, public hearing, I think there's room, isn't there?
On the twenty.
But these, these will be very short, probably, nobody, maybe.
So, our action is to set the public hearing for covenant amendment to August twenty-eighth. Very good, we have motion by Kate.
The biggest risk may be to have everybody else come and say, oh, I won't want to.
Yeah, well, that's gonna be another thing.
That's the question asked and answered, I'm fine with that, if that's, you know, but just considering in fairness, so yes, motion for the twenty.
Motion by Kate, second by Gloria, all in favor, aye, opposed, abstentions, five yes, two absent, thanks Brenna. Anthony, are you?
I'll finish up the last few for Teresa.
Birthday celebration.
Number eighteen, HB Hotel Owner LLC, um, I have it up there, this is on Penny Lane, um, to renovate and relocate two existing cottages on this property. Uh, Teresa's handling this, she's just deeming the application incomplete at this point.
Incomplete, do we have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Gloria, second by Kate, all in favor, aye, opposed, abstentions.
And she had a checklist in the packet.
Oh, good.
How about, uh?
TV.
TV, easy.
You all know this application, uh, she's also has a resolution, and they're deeming this application incomplete.
Incomplete, do we have a motion?
Motion.
By Gloria.
Second.
Second by Kate, all in favor, aye, opposed, abstentions, five yes, two absent, and Clara, what about Sandy, Sandy Hollow?
Sandy Hollow is, uh, off, the agenda, it's gonna be out for the fourteen, yep.
Is off the agenda.
Improvement contract.
Twenty-three and twenty-four.
Anthony, you want to do the review?
Oh, here, I'll do this. Nightmare for the last call. Um, we're doing two actions here, the first one is to set the maintenance bond for the site landscaping.
Item twenty-three?
It's item number twenty-three, let me just read it into the record, I sort of did it at the last minute, uh, but it's.
The amount, right?
Yeah, the amount is, um, the maintenance bond for the landscaping will be thirty-eight thousand two hundred and fifty dollars, and you're recommending that the town board accept it.
Very good, doing a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Kate, second by Gloria, all in favor, aye, aye, opposed, abstentions, five yes, uh, how about twenty-four?
This is for a performance bond for the cross-access.
Uh-huh.
That's what the board asked for, the applicant put the amount together, um, of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Okay.
It's golden.
It's a gold, uh, our engineer looked at it, um, Todd spoke to me, he was like, that's way too high, but the applicant wants to move forward, so, we're setting the performance bond for three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and it's for a period of six months, uh, after the obligation date.
Very good.
Motion.
It's gonna be.
Motion by Gloria, second by Tom.
All in favor, aye.
All in favor, aye, opposed.
Made a lithium battery, so you can charge it.
Stay away to heaven.
Okay.
Gloria, have you signed Verizon Wireless?
I have signed Verizon Wireless, I have signed Chrysler Dodge.
Okay.
And I signed Caribbean, seven hundred and ninety-seven thousand times.
You've all been there.
And the other one's off, which is the North Sea.
Yeah, I've not seen that.
We're not gonna do the town board's room today.
We don't have to, it's just, uh, it was just a follow-up to that recommendation.
Kind of scoop anyway.
I'm all good, right?
We're good to go? Motion to adjourn by Tom, second by George.
Forward, favor.
Aye.
I gotta carry on us.
Yeah.